Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today and welcome everyone here for our May the 9th, 2024 board meeting. Anybody here in the courtroom, I welcome them. Anybody that's online tonight, I welcome them also. Glad to see everybody. Our first item on our agenda tonight is invocation. My Pastor Corey Kiss.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Glad to see you.
... the last five minutes, Beth, like church on Sunday morning before worship service, because everybody's telling you name. If you so desire, would you pray with me as we bow your head? My good and gracious God, we give you thanks for your presence in this place this evening. We thank you for your grace and mercy that have followed us even today, and we count our blessings on this day, both in our own individual life as well as in our community, for indeed you are the giver of all good things. And when challenges arise, as they are sure to come, be our good shepherd to lead and guide us through it all. I pray for each person here in this room today. As reports are given, plans are presented, ideas are discussed, and decisions are made, may a spirit of goodwill, wisdom, patience, and kindness rest on the members of this board, on each person in attendance, and those also who are here in support of the work to be completed. May our love for our neighbors be evident in this place. And this week, as we honor the teachers, and next week, as we honor our nurses, I would be thank you for their calling, that they live out faithfully each day, and the way they serve their community. And on this Ascension Day, as we think of Jesus, who lived and died, was raised from the dead, is seated at the right hand, oh God, at your right hand, one day coming back again too, may it inspire us to live lives pleasingly in your sight, so that we may be found faithful on the day we see you face to face. In the name of the risen and living Christ, I pray. Amen.
All right. Next item is pledge of allegiance. All stand.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Any board members have anything? Staff have any, anything to change?
Mr. Chairman, I do have an additional closed-meeting item related to 2.2371183 for the discussion or consideration of potential acquisition of real property for public purposes.
Okay. And may I suggest that we take the closed-meeting item and move that after our public hearing tonight, public hearings tonight. That's all right with the board?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve it with the change.
I'm voting with approve with the change.
All right. You got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next is approval of minutes, and we have the April 4th, 2024 special meeting, April 10th, 2024 special meeting, April 11th, 2004 regular meeting, April 24th, 2024 special meeting. I hope you all had a chance to read the minutes. Any changes to the minutes, or any other corrections, anything? Or if not, can I get a motion to approve them as a whole?
Motion to approve all of the minutes.
All right. I got a motion, got a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now on our presentations today. All right. Our first item is we have the pleasure of having Delegate Hillary Pugh Kent here. I'd like to welcome her here. Ms. Kent, it's all yours.
I'm normally pretty loud, but I'll use the mic just in case. Thank you all so much for having me here today, just for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be somewhat brief in giving you an update. I was anticipating giving you a recap, but we're still working. So this is more of an update on our Passional Assembly session, and wanted to kind of let you know how things stand in Richmond, so thank you for letting me be here. This past session, I voted on over more than 2,000 bills during our 60-day session on an assortment of issues facing the Commonwealth, issues including economic development, education, school safety, resiliency, mental health, social media regulation, the list goes on. I heard from a lot of folks throughout District 67, which I represent, on these issues and many more, including cost of goods, workforce shortages, taxes, small business support, farming and fishing. I was privileged to serve on the Ag and Chesapeake and Natural Resources Committee, as well as the Finance Committee. Also was appointed to two conferees committees, one regarding the sales tax holiday, which you all are probably very familiar with, that passed, as well as a fishery fund which supported blue catfish processing, which also passed the General Assembly. So I served on both of those committees, and then I had my own list of bills that we presented in the General Assembly, some of which were successful and then some of which were not. I'll give you a little bit of both. Some of the ones that did not go through, unfortunately, this session. I had a bill specifically for small business support that was to help new and existing businesses that were opening to streamline the process and to get them greater information from state agencies when they had to know what fines or fees or reports were due and to streamline that. Unfortunately, that didn't pass. We probably will try to bring something back. I patroned a bill for Northumberland County specifically after hearing from Mr. Tadlock and working with him on what you all have to do and the paperwork requirement for you all in split precincts when you have an election every year. And so we patroned that bill. It actually was going really, really well in committee, lots of support. The Department of Elections supported it. Your local municipal league supported it. Unfortunately, it died in committee, but I told them we'll bring that back. I think that there's certainly an opportunity to bring that back to streamline paperwork. The Department of Elections liked it because it was one less bureaucratic step in their process. We also did a bill that was specifically from our sheriffs and our superintendents on the upper end of the district regarding disorderly conduct in schools to bring that back into the school system where it's currently exempt, so that we don't overcharge our students or also expel our students unnecessarily. That bill failed. I did a bill for FOIA, which actually came out of Northumberland and Lancaster County as well, to ensure that you could not FOIA a minor, and a study on aquafana in the Rapa Hanukkah. So to switch and talk about some of the bills that were successful and passed the General Assembly and also have now been signed by the governor, I introduced a bill for larceny and embezzlement cases. So currently, you would only be able to charge a larceny or embezzlement crime in the home county or city of the accused. That is a problem when people spoof their locations, or now as we have so many online crimes. So the banking community was really behind this piece of legislation, saying this would allow for us to streamline our judicial process, so we don't have to charge a person in multiple jurisdictions, and also that we could present the charge where we could find their location. That bill passed unanimously, and has been signed by the governor. I also did a bill sponsored by the Department of Forensic Science, which also is a privacy bill for the victims and accused of any criminal case, now that many things are online and we've modernized the process. We wanted to protect your privacy, whether you are the victim or the accused, of your DNA, just to ensure that that was protected and also to streamline that process. That also passed and has been signed. I am home to three state parks in District 67, so we introduced a bill regarding our conservation officers. They're the only law enforcement officer who is not included in the Valers Program, which is the state's retirement program. And as you know, law enforcement retention is very important, and they will go between agencies based a lot of times off of benefits, and so just trying to even the playing field for our conservation officers in our state park. That bill went as far as it ever has gone in the General Assembly session, and my bill was rolled into another and hopefully will then be signed. I did a bill for resiliency, which would actually end up resulting in an effective local and county governments, where we can streamline and work towards building resiliency efforts, efforts in the Commonwealth by creating a separate department for a chief resiliency officer. I worked on that bill as well, and that will be signed by the governor. And then, of course, the bill that I title "The Right to Fish" Bill, which came a lot from this part of the neck of the woods, which now allows a prosecutor, a Commonwealth attorney, to prosecute crimes where a waterman is harassed or inhibited, or where their personal property is destroyed by someone else. They can prosecute that under a misdemeanor and restitution, which was very important that we kept in the bill. So you are no longer allowed to stop a waterman from doing their work, their right to work, and you're not allowed to steal their crabs out of their crab pots or cut their nets or something like that, or destroy their boat. That can be prosecuted, as well as punished with restitution. It also includes voting course and removal of your hunting and voting license. So good news to report too for bills that passed, and certainly proud of that work. When we went back to reconvene session in April, we worked on the governor's vetoes, on amendments on these bills, and also on the budget. I supported a budget during that time, the House version of the budget, which kept appropriations in for things like project ceasefire, SRO grants, police officer recruitment, STEM programming, CTE, broadband access, workforce development, all while not increasing taxes. However, we were all on very different pages. The House budget was much different than the Senate budget, which was much different than the administration budget. So unfortunately, we did not sign a budget at that time, but I think the plan put forth was the right plan to say, let's regroup, find common ground, and put forth a budget that all Virginians can agree to, and what our job is, is to present a budget to all Virginians that we can all support. So hence why this is an update, not a recap, because I will go to Richmond on Monday, and we will go back to that special session to vote on our budget. And I will continue to vote for a budget that highlights our priorities here in District 67, for schools, for law enforcement, for a safe community, for economic development, and protecting our natural resources. So when I first started in reconvene, I said, we have a long way to go and a short time to get there, and now I say we have a short time to get there and a short time to go, but we'll get there, and I'm certainly optimistic with our opportunity and our results that we'll get a budget next week, as I know all local governments, state agencies, I see our EMS folks in the back, our, some of our teachers and schools in the back, everyone is anxiously awaiting a budget, as am I. So hopefully we'll get there. And I just want to say thank you to you all. Thank you for your opportunity. Thank you for you all coming to Richmond. That certainly was some of my favorite parts of being in Richmond and representing, is seeing you all there and having that dialogue. So I want you all to know that that's what we're here for, and if ever I can be of service or ever I can do anything for you, please don't ever hesitate to reach out, because that's what we're here to do. So thank you for what you all do. There's everything I can do. Please don't hesitate. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any board members have any questions?
I don't have any.
None?
No.
Ms. Pugh, on behalf of Mr. Williams over there, we're both commercial watermen, and we appreciate what you've done for us all day.
Thank you.
I know he feels the same way.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's going to be a, that's going to be a big help to the water.
Great. Yes. A lot of folks put a lot of effort into that, so I was certainly glad to be a part of it and patron that, so thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any idea on a timeframe on a budget?
So I'll say this, my, my bet would be before Thursday. Does that sound good enough?
Hey, that's close enough. That is close enough.
So it'll either be presented this weekend or Monday, we'll go back. I anticipate we'll sign it 48 hours after that. So that, that would be my anticipation. So within 48 hours of us going back into special session.
Staff have any comments, questions?
No, I would just like to thank you for your assistance in supporting the bill on the elections. I know the registrar and the electoral board supports that as well, and want to thank you.
Absolutely. I'm happy to, we'll carry it again if it helps.
Great.
Yeah, absolutely. They even said in committee, this is a great bill. This makes a lot of sense. This is really great. And then they're like, we'll vote to table the bill. And I'm like, thank you so much. So we'll bring it back.
Appreciate it.
So thank you all so much. I appreciate everything you all do.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Pleasure to have you here. As always, a standing invitation for you to come.
Thank you so much. I'm headed to the Rapa Hanukkah, Northumberland varsity boys game right now, so I'll cheer on both teams to everyone. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next would be update from Northumberland County Schools, Dr. Worgo, Mr. Tarboo. Good afternoon, ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. The first thing we'll review with you is the newsletter that you should have at your seat. This is an extremely busy time of year, so I wanted to update you on all of our celebrations. At the elementary school on page one, you can see next week, we will have NES Fun Day on Monday. We'll have pre-K graduation on Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Fifth grade recognition at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, and then during the day, we'll have NES awards on Thursday. At the middle school, on Tuesday, we have the eighth grade bridging ceremony at 8:30 in the morning, and the sixth grade awards at 1:45. We'll have seventh grade awards on Wednesday, and then PBIS Fun Day on Thursday. At the high school, tomorrow is a very special day. You are welcome to attend. The senior walk is at 9:30 AM, and then tomorrow evening, Mrs. Booth and I will be attending the RCC graduation, and I believe that's at Essex High School. This coming Monday, we have the Northern Neck Technical Center graduation, that's at Rapa Hanukkah High School. On Friday, May 17th, we'll have graduation practice, and a very exciting day on Saturday, May 18th, at 10:00 AM, we will have graduation. If any of the supervisors need tickets to graduation, please feel free to contact me. You have my cell phone number, you can email, or you can let Mr. Tadlock know. As we dive into this latest message, which will go out tomorrow, on page two, you have information about last Friday's senior class trip. The students went to Ocean City, Maryland, and you can see how much fun they had. Last Friday, I also had the pleasure of attending the middle school's spring formal, and I got to man the cupcake table, and it was very popular. If you look at page four, we had baccalaureate last Sunday at 6:00 PM. It was a very moving ceremony. That's one of my favorite ceremonies, baccalaureate, and we're proud to still host that. CBGS had graduation this Monday evening, and that's this past Monday evening. We're very proud of our students. On Monday, I also had the opportunity to attend the Diary of Anne Frank with our sixth grade, and that was at the Westmoreland Players Theater. We want to congratulate NHS student Seth Robinson and NHS teacher Shelby Brooks. They were both honored by RCC with different accomplishments. This week, we celebrated School Nurse Day and Week, as well as Teacher Appreciation Week, and we thank our amazing teachers and our school nurses for all of their dedicated service. And that's my signal that it is time for me to conclude, so I'm going to step to the left, and I'm going to invite our Director of Finance.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have a few updates for you. First, I hope that you all received my email explaining more about the school nutrition funds. Dr. Worgo passed it out at the beginning. If you didn't, I didn't know if you had any additional questions on that.
Board members have any questions? None at this time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. As far as the monthly reconciliations, I just have a few journal entries to do, and we'll be up to date through April revenue. I have not received the expenditures from the county yet, because they're waiting on their bank statement, but once they have that, I'll have that reconciled quickly. I would like to take a moment to clarify some comments that were made last night at the public hearing regarding the school budget. There were several people who stated that the school budget has increased by $1.7 million, and that is just not the case. The facts are as follows. For fiscal year '24, you approved an appropriation of $21,957,409. The request for fiscal year '25 is $22,153,020. That is an increase of $195,195,611. Let me repeat that. That is the increase of the budget. Now, there is a reason that the $1.7 million keeps coming into the conversation. The local composite index for Northumberland County changed by the state from 0.6971 to That means that there was an increase in the local share requirement for the school budget. A local composite index of 0.7672 means that the county must fund 76.72% of the school budget instead of the 69.71% that was required last year. That alone was over $1.5 million. So it's true that our budget reflects an increase in additional county funds, but it does not show a $1.7 million overall budget increase. I'd like to reiterate that we still do not have a final revenue budget from the state. However, if the most recent proposal by the General Assembly is approved, Northumberland would receive an additional $546,000 in state revenue. Sounds like we might know that next week. That's awesome. There were also some comments made last night about the school system having an excess of $9 million that we had not returned to the county. I just want to make sure that the public understands the way school funding works in Northumberland. When you, the Board of Supervisors, approve our budget, that tells us how much we can spend. We are not handed millions of dollars. Every time we pay an invoice or run a payroll, those transmittals come to the Treasurer's office for approval. We literally walk next door with all of the necessary documents to get that approved. They make sure everything matches, everything's legit. Once they approve it, then the Treasurer's Office releases that specific amount of money to pay that specific set of invoices. That's why we never really have money to return, because we really never, we never get extra money. We don't receive funds unless they're being spent, so the comments about the $9 million are undeniably false. Finally, I'd like to share our updates from the forensic audit. Each week, Dr. Worgo and I meet with the UHY team to review any issues that may be preventing progress on the audit. Then we review what was completed that week and detail the next steps for us and for the auditors. Eventually, there will be additional feedback regarding findings, insights, and identified risks. For the entire month of April, which is when this began, UHY stated there were no issues preventing progress. We spent April 30th and May 1st with the auditors, providing all of the documentation they requested. I want you to be aware of the fact that we have been cooperative and transparent with every request we have received. At your last board meeting, you requested additional information about the spending of the Esser funds. I plan to share information about that in detail in our joint meeting on May 30th. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
All right.
I've got one.
Go ahead.
You said you were expecting $546,000 in additional state funding. What is the difference in that amount and what you received last year?
I don't know that off the top of my head. The, the revenue changed because of the local composite index, so there was a, there have been two budgets, and the most recent one, the difference was that $546,000, where we would be getting more, more back.
We can send it over to my...
Just kidding.
I can look at it, I just don't know off the top of my head.
That'd be great. Any other questions? Any other board members have any questions? Any staff have any questions? All right. Ladies?
I have one additional question.
Yes, ma'am. You go ahead.
... from the microphone. Yesterday, the school board had a special called Meeting, and you are aware that we have the new construction funds and that the board prioritized some capital improvement projects. So yesterday, after going through the whole RFP, the whole process, the school board did approve resurfacing the track, and they approved moving forward with replacing the flooring, the remainder of the flooring of the elementary school. So the school board is honoring that agreement that we talked about regarding the EVV Bank, and I believe Mr. Tadlock shared that with the supervisors today, but I just wanted to give you that public statement. So we appreciate everything you do to support us.
And we also appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item would be a resolution for Mr. Edward Johnson, my tall board, who's taking care of that. Drew, you got that?
A resolution honoring Mr. Edward Johnson, whereas Mr. Edward Johnson dedicated over six years of public service to Northumberland County by serving on the county electoral board, and whereas Mr. Edward Johnson demonstrated the highest qualities of dedication and commitment to public service, and whereas Mr. Johnson served as vice chairman of the electoral board, and whereas Mr. Johnson was a faithful, reliable, and committed board member who will be greatly missed for his dedication and willingness to take on the most difficult task and service to the people of Northumberland County. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Edward Johnson for his service to the county and its citizens, and wishes, wishes for him success and happiness in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved, this resolution is hereby adopted on this day, May 9th, 2024.
All right. Pleasure to board.
Move to approve.
All right. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Come on up, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and all you've done on that board.
I'd now like to add all... I really appreciate it. Citizens of Northumberland, allowing me to do that.
I appreciate everything. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Our next would be a proclamation for National Safe Voting Week.
During National Safe Voting Week, May 18th through May 24th this year, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents, and that life jackets could prevent nearly 75% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving, emergency distress, and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters to stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas in 2023, eight people died and 39 were significantly injured on Virginia waters, and whereas in 2023, 63% of boating-related fatalities in Virginia were caused by drowning. Whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Therefore, the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2024, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. It would, and it's thereof, our... Therefore, the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2024, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. In witness thereof, I urge all those who vote to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating, given under my signature and the seal of the County of Northumberland, Virginia, this 9th day of May, 2024.
All right, it's a pleasure to board.
Move to approve the proclamation.
I'll second it. All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone here to accept this?
Thank you, all the good work you do. We all wear life jackets. We're promoting the same motto. Life jackets worn, nobody mourns. Think about that next.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next is a resolution for EMS Week.
A resolution from the Board of Supervisors of Northumberland County, Virginia, recognizing the important contributions made to the well-being and safety of the county's citizens by emergency services personnel, and establishing the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Northumberland County. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are readily, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas members of the emergency medical services team, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by Designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Northumberland County, Virginia hereby commence all emergency services personnel who serve this county for their dedication to the safety, health, and well-being of all county citizens. And be it further resolved that the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, marks the 50th anniversary of EMS Week, which will be observed throughout the county as Emergency Medical Services Appreciation Week, with this year's theme being honoring our past, forging our future, reminding us to acknowledge the foundational work of those who came before us while also striving to build and lead the EMS system we envision for the future.
All right, it's a pleasure to board.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
I got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we got my old mind coming up, please. I'd just like to thank everybody for all the service that we give to y'all, which is the service that we need. And I'm fortunate enough to use it, or unfortunate enough to use it. We have to use it, not so fortunate, but at least we have. And I appreciate everything that's been done. I got a little, you owe me a pin. What did you do? All right. Our next is a resolution for Teacher Appreciation Week.
National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th, 2024 through May 10th, 2024. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors proclaims May 6th through 10th, 2024, to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors strongly encourages all members of our community to join by personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
All right, it's a pleasure to board.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Who's here to accept this award here? Everyone, come on up, please.
Hello. Nice to see you.
Well, we thank you on behalf of all the teachers. I accept this resolution. We think you all were always a part of it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And next is a resolution for Police Week.
Designating May 12th through 18th, 2024, as Virginia Police Week. Whereas police officers throughout the state of Virginia work tirelessly to protect and serve citizens and force laws and keep our neighborhood, schools, and families safe. Whereas police officers report for duty, aware of the sacrifices they may be called upon to make and rest in their lives each and every day in order to safeguard the public and the force laws of the Commonwealth. Whereas the selfless dedication and bravery of our local Northumberland County Police as our safety and well-being is promoted by the devotion to maintaining peace and security. And whereas the Virginia Police Week, our opportunity is to honor officers and recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those that continue to protect and serve our county and the state of Virginia. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors recognize Virginia Police Week and hereby commence all police officers in the county and the state of Virginia. Be it further resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors strongly encourages all members of the community to join and personally express an appreciation to our officers for their dedication and devotion to their work.
All right. Pleasure to board.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All y'all, come on up, please.
All of us?
Yep.
I just want to thank y'all for all the service that you did. Looked at all, we really have to thank you. All of them. Great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to accept this resolution. One civilian staff dedicated. Also like to accept this one we have. That we keep with us. This is like Taylor Hayden. There is a path in the amber. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, next would be a resolution for Public Service Recognition Week.
Whereas public servants give tireless efforts every single day to serve Americans at many levels of government. Whereas public servants in Northumberland County include local, state, and federal government employees from varied professions. Whereas public employees take not only jobs, but solemn oaths. Whereas day in and day out, they continue to fulfill their duties by providing the diverse services demanded by the American people, their government, with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy with irregular changes in its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and said heretofore that May 5th through 11th, 2024, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government servants within Northumberland County, Virginia.
All right, it's a pleasure to board, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All our public service people, please come up. All the public service people.
Yeah, I would say any local, state, or federal employees.
Yeah, it's all local, state, and federal. Come on up. Don't be a national man.
Come on, hire me for us. I'm feeling all this.
Come on.
Bye, Bill. Recognize them.
I got them, yes.
I'd just like to thank everybody. We're talking about county people, they do a wonderful job. Then we have PDOT, they do a wonderful job. But then we would have a few more potholes in the road. County staff do a wonderful job. All of them, so we can. Very glad to have y'all. Lord, y'all. Thank y'all very much. All right. Next is a update from Tourism Council by Bullitt.
I think he's going to be online.
He's going to be online? Mr. Bullitt, are you online today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. How are you tonight?
Pretty good, sir. Glad to have you here tonight.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank you, the board, for allowing me to brief via Zoom. I felt I probably best I quarantined myself so I didn't spread anything to the rest of the group. So I'll just keep it local right here. The purpose of our briefing is to give you an update on ARCA Tourism Recovery Program. You can go to the next slide, please. Give you an update on the tourism grant money that has been currently used, and also obtain approval for a purchase of Leisure Media 360 advertisements, all those in detail. Next slide, please. Just as a background, we received some Virginia tourism, ARCA money from the Virginia Tourism Commission. We received $70,000 in grant money, and those funds were to go into the below categories. Do you see the table? And purchases for these, for the ARCA funds had to be invested before the 30th of June. You'll see the three categories, 8504 paid media, 8505 marketing and production, 8506 tourism and product development. We're going to go into those in detail so I can give you the current status of all those. On the far right, you see the revised funding amounts that we have. How much has been spent and what has remained. Next slide, please. The 8504 paid media was broken down into four separate components. The Chesapeake Bay Water Guide, the Billboards Inn, Chesapeake Bay Water Guide ad, and the Leisure Media 360. I have links on the, on the top two that will take you to the current advertisements that are being posted. The Billboards Inn, last time I met with you all, I gave you a briefing on the Billboards. Those are up and running now. They'll be running all the way through June of this year. With respect to the Leisure Media 360, this is the one that requires your supervisor approval tonight. It says no competition, no market research necessary because Leisure Media 360 has a state contract and is working directly with virginia.org. So they were, they were offered to us through the Virginia Tourism Commission. They had two new sets of banners that they were able to be able to advertise. When you go to virginia.org, you can see the banner advertisement on this cities and towns link. And that link right there will take you to a overhead view of the rebuilt water tower. And that stays up there whenever you go to cities and towns. That'll be there through September of this year. The next one that'll come in is another advertisement that we're working on right now. And that'll be the same area, but it'll be the same virginia.org site. But it'll be in the Chesapeake section. And that'll run through July, June, December, and April. What we're needing from this is an approval, which is grant money already, an approval for $7,200 for the release of payment for Leisure Media 360. I'll take a step back, we'll continue on this, but let's go to the next slide. What I call a little success story. Here's a, here's a map showing all the different advertising areas. They're either gas stations, or they're bar restaurants throughout the north Virginia and out slightly west beyond the project for what we're advertising today. You can also see we have them down at Shore Farm. I'm going to be getting statistics from Billboards Inn. They're going to tell us, tell us how much frequency has been viewed for those different advertisements in those locations. And I'll be able to report those back to board as I get them. Next slide. With respect to the 8505 marketing production, the money from there is solely for the production, production of kayak brochures. I've been working with Mr. Ahart and the Northumberland Association for Progressive Stewardship, and Lisa Hall, who married me up with Mr. Ahart. We're going to refresh the brochure that is already. We're going to refresh the brochure that has already been released before, and we're going to have those reprinted. What we're doing there is we're waiting for the final approval of the kayak launch facility decision, and that's something that Mr. Beatty will discuss in a short video. I could go to the next slide, please. With respect to 8506 tourism product development, that's primarily the ones that I was talking to you about just now, about the kayak launch facilities. I'll go over those briefly, because I know Mr. Beatty will have more details, but suffice it to say that we did the investment on the kayak launch facilities, and based on the money that was, that we budgeted and the bids that were received, we had to forego improvements to Geralbeach and forego interpretive signage for Storylock among public access sites. The fishing pier at Raycomico, well-known with kayak frame has been completed, and you can see the other changes, changes in signage, adding Coast Guard auxiliary, motor safe flight jackets, and parking bumpers is a final question that we have left there. Next slide, please. So in summary, I just wanted to let you gentlemen know that the ARCA tourism money that we're receiving, the grant money, is being put to good use. It's been a pretty good process, a pretty arduous process, but we've had, received a lot of help from Mr. Lisa Hall and her staff in getting us the information we need to get us the approval. And finally, the other recommendation is to recommend approval from you of Leisure Media 360 advertisement invoice. That concludes my presentation. I'm hoping for any questions you may have.
All right. Any board members have any questions? Any questions from board members?
Well, yeah. The Lodge Landing site, I think it was Judge McKinney's son had an Eagle Scout project down there to put in the picnic table and a little area down there. What's being done to keep that up, to go along with everything else being added down there?
Mr. Bullitt, you want to comment on that?
Sure, I would. I'd like to, if I may, if I could defer to Mr. Beatty, he may have more information on Lodge than I do. He's before his own pipe facilities.
I assume you're talking about the little pavilion area right as you start down the hill?
Yes.
On the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, yes. That has been normal part of the checking inspections, like weekly inspections that we do down there. If anything comes up, Curtis lets us know, and we try to move forward with it, but that is not part of the arbitrage because you can't do anything, anything that you do under arbitrage money has to be something new. It can't be repairs, maintenance, or anything like that.
Okay. And I understand that part, but when I'm looking at, a lot of time and effort went into putting that there for the public to use it, and it needs to be maintained. And if it's not maintained, then it may not look so well with all the other things you have in there. So I guess what we need to look at, let's pay a little bit of attention to that as well, and make sure it's usable.
I'll communicate that to Mr. Albright to make sure that that gets included in detail when he's doing his weekly inspections down there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone have any questions? Staff have any questions for Mr. Bullitt? Mr. Bullitt, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. It was very nice, very helpful. Lot of good information in, in the packet that we got from you.
Thank you, sir.
Actually done. Looks really nice.
Yeah. Looks very nice. All right. What's the board's pleasure on, on the Leisure Media 360 for the $7,200?
Move to approve the $7,200.
Second. Got a motion to second to approve the $7,200? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against? All right. Mr. Bullitt, your motion passes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it, and we'll get to start soon.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Our next item is an update from the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we're not, there's more to that story. If you give me one second. Regarding the kayak launches, we had initially budgeted $10,000 for Lodge and $6,000 for Grove Landing, and I may have those numbers backwards. When we, as far as our ARCA budget that we had to put together to get the $70,000 grant, we got half of it upfront, and the rest of it we have to do through reimbursement. When we put those kayak launches out to bid, we only received one bid for each site, and the bids came back way over what we had budgeted, but we have enough to do one site only within our ARCA budget, arbitrage budget. The commission, EDC members met, and their preference is to do the site at Lodge because it already has more traffic, and they feel like that site would be utilized more for kayak launch, and if the board is willing, we would ask that the board approve the proposal from Docks of the Bay to do that land-based kayak launch at Lodge for a sum of $22,000, which is all part of the arbitrage funds.
All right. So you, you're looking for a motion from the board?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to do the one site.
At Lodge Landing?
Lodge Landing.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, second? Do I have any other discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Lodge Landing, is that owned by the county or owned by the state?
County.
County does own that land, which they don't own many.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, sir.
All right.
Is there any additional funds that we can apply for, any additional grants we can apply for to, to continue working on these projects? Because we have another piece of land right there in Hampton Hall Bridge, and it would be nice to do something there as well.
One of the stumbling blocks we ran into there about six years ago, excuse me, was VDOT was going to require a turn lane.
Okay.
And that's very, very, very expensive. But it's a prime piece of land, it certainly should be used for something. Two-headed stones.
Maybe something we need to consider getting rid of and reinvesting that money somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Motion on the floor. All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Brand, answer your question here, if you can, chair of the EC. Yes, one of the tasks that we have in front of the EC is to look for other grants, whether state or federal, that we can use in the area. And with the budget getting ready to pass, we're going to be looking, Mr. Bullitt asked me if we could take a look at the state budget. So yes, we're going to be trying to seek out the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Your motion passes, yes, sir. All right. Now, Mr. Valaneyham, we'll take you now. Department of Transportation.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Good to see you. Been a while since I've been down here, so.
It has.
I think David sent you all an updated report on what's been going on. I'd just like to touch on one, a couple little things here. First, the tornado debris removal. Just want to say it was a great effort by all involved from the initial response to the cleanup efforts, and want to thank all the agencies that responded to, to help us. Chief Balderson, Chief Brand, Sheriff Beecham, Major Allen, and all the other heads of ones that came up to the firehouse and set up the everything for us and had, and kept everything going smoothly. So they, they all need to be commended for their great effort and their leadership. So far as VDOT, we had 24 personnel respond in Northumberland, Langston, Westmoreland Counties with rubber tire loaders, backhoes, trucks, and chainsaws. And within five hours after the storm was over with our efforts and everybody else's efforts, the roads were back open, passable. And our VDOT guys done a great job. One good thing, we didn't have any injuries. So nobody, no injuries during that time to clean up. The next four days were spent cleaning up. We hauled off about 65 loads of debris from that, and so just lucky we were, it was all contained to one area of the county, just thankfully weren't counted wide. So anyway, that's all I pretty much have on the, on the tornado. Just currently, we're ditching in the Balls Neck area and Apple Grove. Got some, next week, I think we get the pipe trucks, so we'll be doing some pipe cleaning on Light Street in the Brown store area. The pavement schedule, 624 Lewis, Southern, Sunnybank, both have been completed pavement. And Timberland is starting on next week, on the 16th, our surface treatment schedule will start. And next week, Timberland, our secondary contract mowing and trash pickup will start next week, and then trash pickup also on primary will start next week. So hopefully the contractors will be in here, and they'll be, our secondary grass is really growing, and so they'll start on that next week. The primary, they sprayed that with a retardant, so that's a little behind, so there'll be another couple weeks before they start on that. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Williams, you have any comments?
No, other than to thank you for, I brought a few matters to Mr. Beal's attention at last month's meeting, they've all been taken care of, and thank you for doing so.
All right. Mr. Law?
Yes, Todd, want to thank you all for all the patching that you've been doing. Great job throughout the county.
That all, Mr. Law?
That's it.
Mr. Brand?
I get him now, right? The only thing I got to say is, I don't think people realize how much y'all get called out nights and weekends for down trees and different things, and the guys at VDOT really do get out, they work hard, and it's well appreciated.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir. Thank you for all you do. We sincerely appreciate it, the whole crew. One quick question on the contract mowing. Is there any regulation or, or anything regarding the mowers throwing the grass out into the highway?
It's, it's in there, I believe it is in their contract where they're supposed to.
There is a law against that.
It is. If they throw, they're supposed to put it back, I mean, they're supposed to clean the road as they go.
Okay. It is a violation of law, I know that. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you all for all the good work you did up there at the tornado and all. Thank everyone for it.
Thank you all for your support.
EMS, Sheriff's Department, you know, Power Department, everybody pitched in. And I know you all have been doing a lot of potholes and all, COVIDs and all, but can you tell me who paved that section down there on 200 where y'all put that COVID crossing in?
That's a speed bump.
It was a VDOT contract, so all I can tell you, all I know is.
Only thing I want to know, did y'all pay him?[1389.52][1389.55](Laughter).
I don't, SBI, SBO, maybe.
That is, that's a mess there. Yeah. I hope, I hope y'all will be looking at doing some improvements down there. All right. Well, Todd, good to see you.
Good seeing you all.
Thank you.
And, and don't be a stranger like you've been. Come on back. Thank you. All right. Next item on our list would be the county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock?
Sir, for the month of April, we had nine new structures. Total construction cost for the month, $4.6 million. Total construction cost year-to-date, $18.4, which is approximately $2.6 million below this time last year. Have several supplemental appropriations. The first one is the FBI payroll reimbursement, 3102-1111, amount $424.80.
All right. What's the board's pleasure? What's the board's pleasure, please?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against? All right.
Next one is reimbursement for tow bill, budget code 3102-5805, $400.
Move to appropriate.
All right. Got a motion, got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those against? All right.
Next item is ballgame reimbursement for the deputies, 3102-1006, in the amount of $455.
Move to appropriate.
All right. Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Next one is the animal-friendly plate funds received, 3501-5802, in the amount of $44.29.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve and a second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is the opioid settlement funds, budget code 47-5102-3200, in the amount of $32,014.47.
Move to approve it.
Got a motion to approve and a second? All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is the Northern Neck Regional Jail fiscal year 25 budget. You have that in front of you in the amount of $12,228,834. Each year, the member localities are required to approve the, their budget. This does not require any funds from any of the localities, so no funding from North umberland is required.
All right. Hope everybody's had a chance to read the budget. Any questions on the budget? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that went approved.
All right. Got a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Got a motion, a second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
Thank you. Next item is the medication storage and distribution project, and this is tied to the opioid abatement funds. I'm going to turn this one over to Chief Balderson.
Chief Balderson, would you come on up, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Give us a rundown on what you would like to have?
Certainly. Assistant Chief Harden's coming up with me, and he's kind of leading the project, if you will. I don't know if you recall, but several months ago, I gave you a heads-up that the Board of Pharmacy and some other regulations have taken place, and by November 27th of this year, we will be required to store and distribute our own medications. We will no longer be allowed to get them from the hospital like we've done for many years in the past. So with that being said, the Department of Emergency Services will be the storage and distribution center for the county. We'll be distributing the medications to the volunteer rescue squads, and we'll be housing them here in our facility. The Board of Pharmacy has regulations that we have to comply with when it comes to the Schedule 2 through 5, which is considered narcotics, as well as the Schedule 6 medications that we carry. Not only is it regulated by the Board of Pharmacy, but it, the Schedule 2 through 5 is regulated by the DEA, and they also have specific guidelines that we have to meet. So with that being said, we were looking at what would be the most efficient and effective way to store the medications and track the medications, because one of the requirements by the DEA is to be able to track that medication from cradle to grave. From the time we receive it until it's distributed to a patient, we have to account for that medication. For two years after that medication is given, we have to retain the records of that medication so that anytime either the DEA or the Board of Pharmacy comes in, they can do an inspection on those records for up to two years. In, in looking at this project overall, we feel that the best way to move forward with this is the vending style machines that you have been given to in your packet. And that vending style machine also has a cabinet along with it. That vending style machine will allow us to track who accessed the machine, what medication they accessed, and we can also set that machine access level to the provider's level of certification. So for example, an EMT can only access certain medications, whereas a paramedic would be accessing all of the medications in their scope of practice. We have laid out. Um, we have, uh, laid out some guidelines, if you will, of, of how this will operate as to, uh, supporting the volunteers within the county, um, and, and how we will use it on our, uh, ambulances as well. So we're asking you to approve, um, the amount, um, for the fire and safety vending machine, uh, Vendemation. We have worked with, uh, Mr. Basie and the opioid abatement group, uh, we've had a teleconference with the executive director from the Opioid Abatement Authority, um, and talked with him about how we would use this machine, um, in regard to the opioid abatement. And with us being able to, to get this vending machine, we're able to store Narcan in this machine as well. So we can do, um, our harm reduction kits that we've been holding off on because we haven't had that secure storage. We now will have that if we are, uh, able to purchase this machine. Um, and, and we can expand this program in the future to other agencies in the county if they wish to participate in that. And again, we would be the housing facility, uh, and able to distribute the, the Narcan out to other agencies as well.
Good. All right. Board of members having any questions?
Some of the funds we just received, they will pay for this machine. Okay.
Again, you're requesting that we go with the fire and safety quote?
Yes, sir. Uh, we feel that, um, that quote and that machine allows us room for expansion in the future, for future, uh, projects that we may want to do as far as the medications go.
I think that since both of the quotes are very close, the difference is minimal, that we should trust Mr. Balderson's judgment and, um, go with the fire and safety quote.
Does that's your motion?
That's your motion?
I can make that a motion, yeah.
Second. All right, I got a motion, a second, any other discussion?
And it, and it will be paid for through the grant funds that we just received?
Yes, sir. It, when we had our, um, conference call with Tony McDowell, with the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, he, uh, we explained to him what the intent of it was, and that it was something new for the county, that we weren't already housing our own medicines. And since it was new, it was eligible to be, to use the opioid abatement monies for, so he, he, he green-lighted it for us, yes, sir.
And he did send us an email...
Yes, we have email confirmation.
Saying that it was approved for that.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And just for the board's information, we have a total of seventy-seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents total in opioid monies, so...
Okay. All right. All right, any other discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against? Balderson, Chief Balderson?
Thank you very much.
Go for it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next item I have is regarding the abandoned or derelict vessel grant application. The board had asked staff to go back and take a look at that and put together a grant package, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Basie as well.
Yes, sir, at the April meeting, one of the April meetings, um, we had a gentleman come in and speak on behalf of the vessel at Bridge Creek. Um, we also looked at the, at, in April, we had a gentleman come in and speak during public comment, we, uh, asking for our assistance regarding removing the Navy vessel that was, um, stuck in Bridge Creek. Uh, and, and we were working with VMRC through this grant to see what we could do. We also are looking at removing, um, the abandoned boat at Lodge Landing, um, which has been an eyesore, and, and VMRC is aware of that one. And then, um, and the board had directed us to move forward with trying to put a grant together for that, grant application together, to have those removed. And in the process, um, we had another one brought to our attention in the great Wycomica, um, just inland from the mouth of Ways Creek. It's an abandoned sailboat there that's sitting on, on bottom, that needs to be removed as well, that the, um, that we've had people had, um, concerned citizens ask if we could include that, and I've also had a board member ask about it as well, so, um, we added that for, for consideration of the full board, in addition to the one in Bridge Creek and the one at Lodge Landing that we were directed to, so, um, I've been working with Rachel Peabody with VMRC on putting a draft together and getting everything she needs in it, and that's what we have presented to y'all for your consideration and review. Any questions?
All right, any board members having any questions? Mr. Basie?
Is there any reason, in your opinion, that we would not include that vessel, the third vessel?
I have no reason not to include it, I'm only bringing it to your attention because it wasn't part of the original directive.
It's the only one that is not up on shore, it's actually out in the water.
All right, any other comments? All right, no other comments, what's the pleasure, the board?
Make a motion, we proceed with the grant.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Mr. Long, you second it?
Yes.
All right, got a motion, a second. Uh, any other comments, questions?
Nothing.
All right. All those in favor say aye. All those against? All right, motion passes. Next item, please?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next would be committee reports. Anyone have any committees that they were on?
Didn't have any meetings.
All right, I, I missed the jail board meeting and I was sick that day, but the budget, you just voted on the budget, so, and all that looked okay, so... Anything else? All right. Next item would be board of supervisors items. First item would be approval of a check register.
Who would that will approve?
All right. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
What's that?
Read to you.
Read to you.
All right, next is board comments. Mr. Williams?
I don't have anything for you.
Nothing?
Not a thing.
Mr. Law?
Yes, uh, Tadlock, up, update on the cigarette tax?
Um, I believe Ms. King, uh, the treasurer, had provided information to the board members, um, to date, and, trying to get to that information right now. To date, I've received thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. That was in our report.
Thirty-eight thousand, that's, that's a pretty good old amount of money.
That's, uh, three months.
Three months.
Three months.
Three months.
All right. That's not bad.
Hmm. That's thirty-eight thousand we wouldn't have had. You're right.
Right.
All right. Mr. Long, you have anything else?
Yes. Old school board office, how we're coming along on that?
Uh, well, the, the board is in the process of scheduling the, uh, engineering, uh, farms for interviews, and Mr. Basie has, uh, started scheduling those today, so, we're in the process of getting that straight.
Okay, the last, the hiring prices, the policy, how are we on that, hiring people?
Uh, with the personnel policy?
Personnel.
Uh, we've updated that, uh, provided that to the board earlier, and, uh, we just need action once the board has, uh, reviewed that, and we can put that back on the agenda and, uh, get that moving for the board.
Okay. That all, Mr. Long? Mr. Bryan?
Um, I'd like to see added to the agenda in July. We requested from the planning commission a few months ago, all the properties owned by North Island County, but we didn't do anything with that. I think we need to review those properties, see what we can use, see what we're not gonna use, what we're not gonna use, consider getting rid of it, and reinvesting that money back into the county. We got property we're not gonna use, it's not doing us any good at all.
You know, the planning commission did in fact do a survey on it.
Yes, sir.
And we completed it.
And put a lot of time in it.
Yes, we did.
We need, we need to do something with it as a board and take a look at it.
That, that, that plan is, is where you're, to look it over and see what you think.
Right.
But there are some places that a billy goat couldn't, billy goat couldn't get, and some places mosquitoes eat you up. But, uh, like you said earlier, get rid of something, get something better.
Reinvest it, make it better.
And we, at the planning commission, correct me if I'm wrong, but we suggested that any monies that we got from this waterfront property would be put in access to waterfront properties. That was a recommendation from the planning commission.
Right. But we, we really need to take a look at that, and I'd like to see it on the agenda for, for July.
All right, we should be able to do that. Anything else, Mr. Bryan?
That's it.
Fisher?
No, sir.
All right. I don't have anything right now. All right. Next item would be, uh, public comment period. Morgan, you be so kind?
What you need? You, uh... About, about time for a break here.
Can we get the public comment through? Jim? Can we get the public comment through?
Yeah.
All right. After, after that, we'll break. Our first person on the sign-up sheet tonight is Eric Hawke.
How you do? Yeah, my name is Eric Hawke, I'm the president of the Harbor Point Homeowners Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the association. I have with me, uh, four members of the board of directors, as well as several other passports that have, uh, members that have served several terms. What I'm here to talk about is, uh, our assets, in particular, our boardwalk and a dock on Black Pond and gazebo, which have been shut down by the county as being unsafe. We take our job very seriously in the health and well-being of our members of our community, and we have refurbished other assets over the years, uh, the grines on our public beach, as well as the, uh, jetty at Hack Creek entrance. And as part of our due diligence in all of this, we come to the county or the government body, um, and in this case, we called the, uh, the county and asked about, uh, permits and requirements for it, and we were told that Philip Marston was in charge, and we met with him at the time, and we asked him what needed to be done for the refurbishment of those assets that have been there for thirty years. Um, we met with him, they were, we were told that we could take them down to the pilings, and as long as we rebuilt them the way they were, then we were good to refurbish them without having to get a permit or anything else. Uh, that's what we did, we went to, uh, the contractors, we had bids on the property, uh, and we had them rebuild them as they were originally built. Uh, after they were completed and the contractors were gone, we got a notice, uh, from the county, and it turns out the county permit, head of permits, Mr. Plant, had been there twice already, and asked to come see the, the, uh, boardwalk and facilities. He came out, reviewed them, and then sometime after that, uh, he put out tape to close them off. We proactively contacted Mr. Luttrell and, uh, Mr. Plant and the county, and asked for a meeting before this thing got out of hand, and we got a letter from the county. And we sat down and met with Mr. Tadlock, uh, Mr. Philip Marston, and Mr. Plant, along with, I had one of my other board members there. And our ass, what we pushed forward was that this was a non-conforming structure, as allowed by Virginia code, which is what it seemed to fall under, that if we rebuilt it as is, as the non-conforming structure codes allow, and we didn't expand it, we didn't grow it, um, which is what we did, we could rebuild it. At the meeting, which lasted over an hour, we came to that agreement, that it, we, we would get a letter from the county that it was a non-conforming structure, and that we agreed, the one aspect that Mr. Plant, is it needed another, uh, stringer, uh, under the boardwalk section, and that was it. And we agreed to do that within sixty days. We all shook on the deal, and we were, this was on a Thursday, and we were expecting a letter on Monday, by Monday, to what we had agreed upon. Monday came, no letter. We started to get, all right, I started to get concerned, we started to get concerned about this. After about a week or so, I called and got, well, there were concerns, we wanted to make sure it's legal, no direction about what they were really about. And then, we get a letter from the county saying that the structures are unsafe, accusing me basically of lying about work done on the structure, and a bunch of other statements that just, I think are false. And that's the letter we get from the county. So I then asked for another meeting with Mr. Tadlock and the assistant, and we discussed this. We're allowed to appeal it, but there is no board to appeal to it right now. There's no process, there's nothing, but we had thirty days to request an appeal. I met with, uh, like I said, with Mr. Tadlock again, uh, to discuss this. He was gonna confer with the county attorney, they were going to confer with Mr. Plant when he returned, he was on a two-week vacation. Since we only had thirty days, we went ahead and filed for the appeal, which nobody could tell us what the process was, and so we filed for that appeal. The day that Mr. Plant was to come back, I didn't hear until four fifty-nine from the county, but that morning, Mr. Plant came out to our facility and put large red stickers on it condemning them as unsafe structures. Somebody from our community, subsequent to that, sent a correspondent to Mr. Plant and asked him, was this real? Because they were unsigned and undated, which is a requirement. His response, and an email may have emailed back to the person, was, yes, he was gonna come sign them and postmark, but he was waiting to find out what legal actions he could take if somebody violated this, before he did it. That was done in the morning, that in that afternoon at four fifty-nine, Mr. Tadlock calls and says he wants to work with us, as they've already escalated the situation. And I said, what does that mean? Well, in the letter, they wanted the assets, complete drawings of them, done by a professional engineer, after the fact, of which they would judge them against. And this goes to a gazebo that's a hundred square feet, that hadn't been touched other than re-roofed in thirty years, and a boardwalk that was built exactly the way it was, which is gonna cost the community a considerable amount of money. Well, the compromise was a verbal of, well, you don't have to get a professional engineer or architectural drawings of the entire boardwalk, you can get, you know, uh, a contractor to provide that. Well, as we told in the original agreement we had, we have volunteers in the community that were going to install the stringer that we had agreed to, but now we have to get a contractor with a, you know, contracting class A contracting license or something to do a drawing, but nothing to what the drawing standards are, or what requirements we would be required to utilize for that drawing. So we're supposed to present a drawing, and I guess Mr. Plant's gonna tell us if that's good enough or not, because there's no direction. I was also then told that all future communications, because we had filed for a hearing on it, had to go through the lawyers, which would cost us more money in using illegal. Subsequent to that, the county's attorney called our attorney, which is gonna... which is going to cost us funds, to say the same thing, that they're willing to take drawings from a contractor, not from an engineer. But again, it's bring me a rock. Not what standard, what permits, you know, what year to build to. And there's never been in this whole thing any explanation of why this doesn't meet the non-conforming structure requirements under Virginia Code, which is what we'd agreed to in a meeting with the county. And so our concerns is, you know, the county, twice we've had an agreement with them, twice they've reneged on the agreement without any clarity of what to do. They won't put anything in writing to us other than a very nasty email to shut us down. And they're shutting down the boardwalk, which is our only access to the beach as the summer comes. And it's very heavy-handed in what they're trying to do to our community with very little, if any justification. And I'm just asking that the county live up to the agreements that they made with us, that we shook on, and the letter that we were expecting from them on that Monday. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Question. Why was this brought back to the county after you talked to Mr. Marston? He told you whatever he told you. You went and did the repairs that you did. What happened to getting back to the county at that point?
Some people in the community sent letters and the comment, the question is, was it a complaint? We've FOIA'd all the records. There, the first time a complaint is mentioned is when a guy named Mike Rasmussen withdrew his complaint. He says, I'm withdrawing my complaint on a Saturday, which then he reinstated the following Sunday, which is what, part of what delayed the whole thing. But it's a series of verbal or questions to the county. Nothing that's, we've seen that's a formal complaint. And again, in the letter we did get from the county, it says several people have complained. On the FOIA request, which is over 100 pages of documents, there are no complaints from anybody else. So if anything else came in, it was solely verbal. And the county's not dealing with me as the president of the board. They're taking meetings and having discussions with Mike Rasmussen, who's not a member of the Board of Directors. He lives in our community, but he has no standing with the board.
You seemingly accuse the county of the escalation. The escalation is, from the outside looking in, happened within the HOA.
The HOA, there are members that are not part of the Board of Directors.
But they are, they are property owners in the HOA.
They're property owners that are complaining to the board.
Which they have the right to do.
Which they have the right to do. So they have complained to us and they have complained to the county. I don't object to that. What I object to is the county not working with the Board of Directors. I have made all of the advances to, let's resolve this, let's have meetings, let's work this through. And they have not contacted me, where we have, through FOIA requests and other information we receive, they're regularly in communications. When we were at the meeting with Luttrell and the team, where we came to that agreement, at the end of the meeting, Mike Plant said, oh, I got to call Mike Rasmussen and tell him how this came out. You know, that's fine, he can do that. But it's that level of communication. We don't get that.
In your opinion, the county's first misstep was what they told you you could do without a permit, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, the county, for example, with the jetty wall, and I'll give you an example, with VMRC. The same people complained to VMRC about us repairing the jetty wall. Randy Owens, I don't know if you know him from VMRC, he contacted me and he says, what's going on? And I told him. And he said, I'll send you the drawings of the original permit. Write up what you're going to do, which I did. He says it all falls under the original permitting, there's nothing you need. And he sent me a letter saying, you can do the repairs you've said and you're good to go. And that put an end to it. We asked, you know, Philip, what we needed to do. And he told us, and we've worked with Philip in the past, it wasn't in writing. And then, you know, Mr. Plant seems not to want to honor what Philip Marston had told us to do and we had contracted for. And we then reached an agreement with him. And he changed the agreement after we had shaken hands and all agreed to a course of action without notifying us. We were not notified. He had discussions with other people, but not with us. And I would like all of you, any of you, to come out and look at it. You know, the literature makes it sound and look like the thing's going to fall down. It's far nicer than it ever was. You know, it's completely rebuilt new. You know, the edges are rounded. And the position we're in right now is, Mr. Plant says, well, it's a trip hazard because a board worked. You know, one board about an inch. Well, we put about 600 boards down. But right now, there's like three or four boards that have worked. But if we'd been allowed to put the center rail in, joists, that we had requested, you wouldn't have that. So right now, it's getting worse, which is what he's saying, and that it's a trip hazard and it's, first of all, go check it out for yourself. Second of all, there wouldn't be a problem if we were allowed to fix it, which we'd agreed to. We had an agreement, we were going to put in the center joists. And now we're not letting, they're not letting us do that. At the same time, they're using that as why it's an unsafe structure. And yet it's far safer than the structure we replaced, which was 30 years old.
This, sir, this Mr. Rambution, is that the?
Rasmussen.
Rasmussen, thank you. What is his complaint in all this?
It gets into personalities and politics in our association, which I don't want to drag you all into. But he's been on our board twice, he's resigned twice if he doesn't get his way. Everything we have done in the community, he has objected to. And, you know, he wants to try and hang his hat on a way to get even with the board, you know, by stirring this up. Now, he will say that he's doing what's in the best interest and the safety, and he was an inspector in PG County. So he'll say those kind of things. But we can show you a history that's very different. And he has a couple of other supporters in the community that called. They don't write because they don't want to be FOIA'd and be on the official record that are in the same position. Everything we've done, when we did, redid our grinds, you all had to get involved through the wetlands board because the attorney had to come in as to whether the grinds were in the same footprint or not and what it meant for the same footprint. And I ended up having to go, I'm an engineer. I ended up having to get with the state surveyor to discuss what a low-profile grinder was. And that's, you know, they start going round and round on some of these rulings. And it costs us time and money, and it costs you all money. And we're just trying to work things through and have nice assets for our community. You know, we don't need the time and effort. You know, I still work full-time. And, but we're putting a lot of time and effort into this, and the county doesn't need it. You know, we, in good conscience, came as to what we needed to do. We did it. And now we're in this situation that's costing us time and money, and it's costing the county time and money. And I'd like to have a meeting. You know, I'm here, I came down. You know, I know it's short notice, I can be here tomorrow. I'll come back, I'll take a day off, come back to meet. But, you know, I think the county supervisors have to be present at the meeting. Because there's a lack of trust with the people we've dealt with because we've had meetings with them and they've reneged on everything that we've agreed to.
All right, let us, let the board talk.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next person is Gene Lepley?
Lepley, yes.
Lepley.
It's Gene Lepley. Thank you for letting me speak a little. Appreciate the time. Thanks for giving Eric some, I'm sorry. I think you gave you all the details of what the problem is. I have only come down to the Northern Neck three years ago when I bought a house in Harbor Point. And I spent full-time in Richmond, but we have a house down here. And I got on the board almost right away. I had no idea what I was getting into. And I am a little embarrassed and sorry that this has rolled up to your doorstep. This has been a tug of war that's been going on for a number of years, number of topics. This is just the latest one, but it's now something for you to look at. I think the underlying problem is a lack of communication and a lack of trust. I'm a communicator by trade. I was in broadcast news for 30 years, spent 15 years on the air at NBC 12 in Richmond as their 5:30 news anchor. I've done, traveled the world for them, been in war zones, covered other conflicts as well. But as a young reporter, I remember covering township supervisors' meetings. And this is where the work really gets done. So I compliment you on giving us time, extra time in Eric's case, to speak about the issue. I think communication that we've had with Mike Plant has not been good. I have examples here. I think you have the packet of some times when his responses have been inadequate and perhaps not quite truthful, not the whole truth. And we could really use some clarity right now because we're confused as to where to go next. We thought we had a deal, and then we didn't have a deal. I think that's where it came off the rails. So I'd like it to get resolved, obviously in our favor. But I would like to have you come forward and just cut through this Gordy knot if you can. I have the packet here that shows you some examples as well in a larger sense of communication styles that are used by Northumberland County, Richmond County, and Lancaster County. Northumberland County, the mother county of all these other counties, does not show well when it comes to transparency and user-friendly on the website. If you look at the other counties, we have examples in here. Lancaster does a little better job, Richmond County does a better job. It's more focused on solving the problem rather than just stating a case. So I think it would be good if we could resolve it. In the end of the day, Eric said he'll come back tomorrow if I have a chance to speak to somebody about it. Seeing it from both sides, I worked for the city police department for 12 years as their public affairs director. So I've been both from the government side and from the journalistic side, what's going on. And I understand that conflict makes news, in a way. And this is our conflict right now. But we'd like it to get resolved as pleasantly as we can. Three years ago, I bought a house down here, a joy to be down here. Everybody I've dealt with here has been very pleasant, first-name basis, very comfortable. I think things can get done, have been, gotten done here because it's a smile and a handshake. I think we can get back to that now. We thought we had it, now we didn't. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next person on the sign up sheet is Kimberly Ruder? Roder? Come on up, Kim.
I have some handouts, can I?
You can hand them out, please, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the time this evening. My name is Kimberly Roder. I live on Cod Creek in Heasville. And I am bringing these issues to you today because I have rung every bell that I can ring, and I am here now to ring your bell. I have had an ongoing issue with my neighbor with non-compliance. I have provided you with the documentation. Starting in 2019, they removed landscaping with their backhoe. They built a bulkhead without documentation. They extended their pier and widened it by approximately 200 feet. There are no records of any of this. There are no applications, there are no permits, there's nothing. I brought this to the attention of both the county and VMRC in February 2024. There has been no action to date. 22 to 24, we suffered through a variety of light trespassing issues with the county. We did get support from the county with those issues, and those were addressed three times. We still have a light pollution issue with this neighbor. So we are not resolved. In February, they started construction on what would be a boathouse. Again, no applications, no permits, no information. They just started putting in 60-foot pilings on Wednesday. I made a phone call, the work was halted. I contacted the county. I was told this was not a county issue, this was a VMRC issue. I immediately got Jeff Madden on the phone and spoke with him. Jeff had to do a site visit and advised them that they needed to put in an application for the boathouse. And at that point, he may look into the pier issue. In addition to these things, we've also been having a lovely septic leak since last fall. I, in January, called the Department of Health to report the septic leak. We have confirmed both visually and through our noses that it is there. I have had no contact from the Department of Health on this issue at all. I did make a phone call and filed a complaint on January 29th. We continue to smell poo every three to four weeks or so. Kind of depends on the rain. Again, no action to date. So if all this wasn't insulting enough, right, that I have to deal with this, now they have been issued new work permits. And they are adding a 16-by-42 addition on the water side, granted. In addition to that, they will be adding a 10-to-16 deck on the water side, granted. The 16-by-42 addition, described as a den, will replace a 12-by-21 three-season room. This can all be seen in the photos. It will add 375 square feet of roof and living space to the home. In addition, there is a 10-to-16 foot deck that has been approved. That is an additional 160 feet of impervious covering within 50 feet of the wetlands. All of this will extend the roofline of the house four feet towards the water. The entire home is within the 100-foot bay buffer zone. And the new addition will be approximately 18 feet from the wetlands. I want to know how that got approved. How can someone have undocumented work over and over and over at their house and then go get a building permit? How, how, how many people do I have to call? What do I need to do? Now, I will say that they have filed on May 6th, they did file for their boat, their boathouse application with VMRC. I will certainly be addressing that directly with Jeff Madden. But my question to you, oh, and in addition to this, we have a variety of civil issues that have been going on, up into including an issue of a cease and desist for my lawyer for trespassing, encroachment, harassment, and assault. They continue to block the easement with their trash. So my question to the Board of Supervisors is, what do I do next?
Mr. Marston? Do you have any comments on this addition and everything?
What I can say is, is I required a survey of the existing improvements that were on site. What was proposed was redevelopment of those existing improvements, aside from a little bit additional. It came from removal of impervious cover that was closer to the water than what was approved. And that was approved along with mitigation that's going to have to come after construction is done.
I don't have those details of what you're talking about, but what you just said does not align with what I see.
I mean, I will be happy to investigate. This is the first that I'm hearing about it.
Totally understand.
And if you wanted to come in and look at the application and look at what was permitted, I will be happy to sit down with you and we can go through all of that paperwork.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I can justify why I did approve it based upon redevelopment. But this is the first I'm hearing about.
Okay, yeah. And we're 18 feet from the, from the bulkhead.
Okay, 18 feet.
Yep. And so, and in your packets that I provided with you, I did give you some documentation. I used Google Earth to make these measurements, which the U.S. Military Trust, so I trust too. And so the pier that they have put on extends an additional 18 feet from the original pier that was built. And it appears that they also did extend our backfill of bulkhead. But that's kind of hard to prove from these pictures, except for measurements. So Phil, thank you. You know, we'll be in touch. And I appreciate that, and hopefully we can get some resolution.
All right, so please contact Mr. Marston. So please contact Mr. Morrison. Come in, look at it, and he'll be, I know he'll be glad to come down and look at it also.
Okay. Thank you.
If you want, I'm more than glad to come in.
Okay.
Health Department, I would just say, call them again.
Mm-hmm.
You may have to keep calling them more frequently.
I can do that.
Mr. Haney?
Yes.
I was going to sit here and be quiet, but I can't.
Uh-oh.
Because I look at things a little different. I feel when someone calls this county and they have an issue, they should not hear right off the start that it's not the county's problem. It is the county's problem. It is the responsibility of our staff to, if we can't take care of it as far as the county government, to direct these people in the right direction. And if we have to make contact with the people, like the Health Department, to say, hey, this person's been calling you and has called you several times. I dealt with an issue this past weekend. The same thing I heard from the citizens in Lewis Allen. We've contacted the county several times. Nothing's been done. We need to stop dropping the issues right at that. It's not our problem. It is our problem. When we get that phone call and that complaint, we can at least direct them in the direction of the people that can help them and stay on it and make phone calls.
Well, I agree with you on that 100 percent.
And you know, we keep getting complaints on the staff, and it's getting to the point where I think we're going to have to have a meeting on these complaints.
Well, I know I want the two to get together here, Mr. Morrison and I, and get together now. If I speed it up a little bit, say 12 o'clock tomorrow, we all meet down there on site? Philip, you make that?
I am scheduled to be off, but I will absolutely.
I actually have a conflict, too. I can make mine work, but I mean, does the bail fill out?
All right. What would work better? Well, y'all, both right here. What works better?
I can do Monday.
This week, next week.
I will make Monday work, absolutely. My calendar is on my desk as far as what other appointments I have, but I will absolutely work.
You call me and let me know. Okay. We'll work it out. All right.
All right. That'll be fine.
Are you coming, too?
Yep. If you want me there, I'll be there.
All right. Well, I'll, thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Tom Jeffries.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'll be real brief. I put together a package here related to the wireless radiation and the smart meters we talked about a few months back. I want to thank you for bringing in Dominion Energy and letting them hear questions from yourselves and from the public. So thank you very much. One of the things that I asked a Dominion representative was to provide the safety information from the manufacturer of the smart meters. He said he would do that. Have you received that information from him to this point?
I haven't received anything. Have you received anything, Mr. Toddler?
I forwarded any information that I received.
All right. Would you contact him and ask him about the information tomorrow, please?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And in this packet, I have, again, I just copied the three-page resolution that I'd like the county to consider, allowing for opt-out of the smart meters for citizens who have concerns. So that's all in this package, and this is just meant for your convenience.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's fine. All right. Next persons we have this time, Dr. Karen Biker and Dr. Linwood Blizzard.
I think we stand between you and the break, so we'll be brief. And I think this is going to be an easy thing for y'all. We're here to offer some help. So Dr. Blizzard and I are the co-chairs of the Joint Finance Committee. We know that there was a hearing last night on the school board budget. We know that there probably still is some analysis that needs to be done, a work that needs to be done before y'all can vote. But what we wanted to do was offer our assistance. We didn't know if you already had a timeframe planned. I know Delegate Kent said that we had, next week, hopefully, we'll be able to see what the budget looks like. So I think we're here to offer our assistance if you need anything in anticipation of your vote, and if you had any idea when you might need that help or not need that help, a date.
All right. Board members, have any comments?
I guess hopefully the state's going to do something on the 15th, maybe.
Yeah, next week, hopefully, we'll have a budget open. We need to have some work sessions here, see what we're going to do. We need to set them tonight.
Oh, we have those set temporarily already?
We have these.
Kind of set there that we've had from last night.
Yeah.
If that's what we're going to keep in stone, it's fine.
So we actually have a meeting on the 15th.
Right.
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll hear something by the 15th, that evening.
All right. We will keep you informed, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help. All right. Next person is Kent Eans.
I think I signed the wrong form.
Oh, are you here on one of the public hearings?
Yes, I am.
All right. Well, if you, now, you can comment about anything else except the public hearings.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Andrew here, Levine?
Same here.
Same here. All right. Good enough. All right. I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone like to speak? Come on up, please.
Just take a minute. I'm Doug Morissette. I'm at Harbor Point. Eric spoke to you all in the beginning. I would like to be able to walk the boardwalk so I can get access to the beach. This is the time of year that we use the beach, and we're not allowed to climb on the sand dunes. It's the same boardwalk that was put in 30 years ago, except now it's got new boards on it. All it needs is a centerpiece. Doesn't take long to fix. If I wasn't so old, I'd fix it myself, but you won't let me do it because you got something up there that says, "I'm subject to arrest if I walk on the boardwalk." So I would like to get a decision, you know, that we can open it up so the community can use it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening. Denise Mazique, District 3 School Board Member. With your consideration, what a better way to show teacher appreciation week and to show teachers that you appreciate them by making them a priority tonight and voting positively for the school budget. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. My name's Paul Carey. I spoke last month, and I'm here with the most affected homeowner, Richard Lances, who also appeared last month. And with his permission, I'm just here to thank you for the urgency with which you have moved this application with VMRC forward. And I especially want to acknowledge the good work of Mr. Basie. There is an effect that seems to be lending urgency, and it's this. VMRC, at last month's meeting, approved a slate of abandoned vessel projects, which has taken the balance of this fund down to 1.2 million. Now, we don't know what kind of an agenda they'll have at the May meeting, but this is from a balance that started this year at 3 million. We're going to have an effect with a shrinking pie, the effect of our project on Bridge Creek occupying a larger and more prominent piece. And obviously, that will pose some difficulties with the approval process to the extent we encounter any delays. I want you to know that Mr. Basie understands this. He's got the VMRC calendar down tight. We are cooperating and available to help support the refining of the application for any rebuttals or responses that are necessary. So we just want to thank you for the urgency that you've demonstrated, and I hope we can keep it up.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Lances, and the large Navy vessel is at my dock. I simply would like to thank all of you on the board and the county administration for your swift work with this application. We really appreciate it, and thank you all for your excellent work.
I understand that a bid has been put in for the removal?
I think so, but I'm not 100 percent sure, sir. I think there is a bid, but I'm not exactly sure how much it is or from who it came. Mr. Carey might have a little more information on that.
What I believe, and please correct me if I mistake this, true, there is a process of securing estimates. And the county does have a figure in mind to support an application in the coming weeks. There are many contingencies here, including hazardous materials and also the dimensions of the vessel and what it will take to rig and load it up and move it out. But I believe that Mr. Basie has been in touch with a high-level contact in VMRC, and there have been discussions going on so that the initial submission, we hope, will be sufficient to at least lock down and earmark. And, but the actual contract bidding may take several weeks or even a few months to completely hammer down and execute. Did I misspeak in any?
I think you stated that well. We have received from VMRC, they had contacted a contractor that could potentially do it just to have an idea. They shared that.
That was a company offering topping?
Yes. They shared a quote for Bridge Creek as well as Lodge Creek vessels at the same time, just so we could have those as an idea as we were putting the application together. But it's, we have not received, we have not done the application and received the funds to be able to move forward with putting it out to bid, to be able to say for sure who the vendor will be, contractor will be, or what the price is at this point.
Okay. Thank you all.
Again, we thank you all for your help. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, too. All right. Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak? Would anyone that's online tonight like to speak in the public comment period? Morgan, you got anybody? Anyone online tonight like to speak in the public comment period? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start our public hearing tonight, we're going to take a 10-minute recess and Let's call this meeting back. Your order here. We didn't mean to take longer than 10 minutes, but let's see if we can get this going tonight. I'm going to open the public hearings now. Our first request is a hearing on Robert W. J.C. Philip, would you take that over, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Robert W. J.C., trustee owner, for a conditional use permit to construct a commercial pier on property zone R2 residential waterfront. Property is shown as tax map parcel 43-1-194 and is located at 619 Train Lane.
All right. Anyone here representing Mr. J.C., Mr. McKinley?
That would be me.
All right.
Is this on?
Yes, sir.
It's on.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good evening. My name is Roger McKinley. I live at 691 Mill Point Drive in Heesville, Virginia, and I have been a resident and a fisherman and a boater on Mill Creek for over 50 years. The applicant is Dr. J.C., and he has owned property here since 1975. He set up his eye clinic in his home so his patients would not have to drive to Richmond to get their eyes checked. He also has a large investment here with the restaurant and the winery, providing jobs and income for residents of the county. A few years back, the county was trying to improve its public access to the water. Dr. J.C. donated a 17-acre waterfront parcel on Mill Creek for that purpose, and he has a deep love for Mill Creek and for this area as well. The application is for temporary docking for the convenience of customers and visitors to the restaurant and the winery. The commercial enterprise is up on the farm, not down on the creek. The pier, as proposed, is 90 feet long with a 12-foot by 30-foot L, and there are five mooring piles proposed 20 feet out from the pier. Robert, can I get you to post? This is a Google shot of the pier. This is the piece of property. From this pier to this point over here is 650 feet or 560 feet. So there's plenty of room for boats to ingress and egress here. For those of you that are familiar with Mill Creek and its navigation, there's a sandbar off this point right here, and there's a white PVC pipe sitting at the end of that to help boaters navigate around that sandbar. So the main channel for the ingress and egress moving upstream is right here in the middle, and the distance from that pier to here is 300-some feet. So I just wanted to clear up the fact that we're not presenting an obstruction to navigation in any way, shape, or form. It's for temporary use. People will come to the restaurant, to the winery. They can dock a small boat there. The slips are very small. They're only 10 feet wide and 20 feet long, so we're not looking to dock large sailboats. Sailboats usually anchor out and then get in their dinghies and ride around and look. So this pier will not be used for loading or unloading seafood or produce or any of that type of thing, and we're certainly willing to proffer that in the conditional use permit if we can get approved. There'll also be a sign there stating no overnight boring of boats allowed. Since my moving here in 1967 until some years ago, there had always been a commercial operation located on Mill Creek. Right there, we had a grain loading and unloading site with a commercial pier and a derrick. We had large tubs and barges coming and going, loading grain from huge storage silos on the point. And on the next point up, which would be there, that's Corbin Point, there used to be a loading and offloading site for local farmers to offload their vegetables and have them shipped to Baltimore. The four designated slips are small and are designed for smaller boats, not large sailboats that are mostly too wide anyway and normally anchor out. As I have stated in the application, we are trying to encourage local and transient boaters to use the restaurant and the winery facilities, similar to Horn Harbor over on the Great Lakomiko and the Crazy Crab down on Cockles Creek and Reedville. Wycomico and the Crazy Crab down on Cockrell Street and Reedville. I have already secured a permit from the County Wetlands Board, and I've also secured a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for this project. Many of our local residents were once visitors here to our area and decided to return permanently and live here. That fact alone has boosted the economy of the county tremendously with property purchases, new home construction, local contractors being employed, and shopping at local businesses. In closing, there are really just two types of concerns, real and imagined. And I would ask you, please don't let a bunch of imagined concerns take away the real purpose of this simple pier. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
All right. Any board members have any questions?
None at this time.
Mr. McKinley, the distance from the sandbar of the point, that actually pier, this pier's gonna be up inside the cove, short distance across the creek, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 560 feet across that creek.
Yeah, so that pier right there from our pier is 635 feet.
635 feet, and that would be the closest point of approach.
That's correct.
And you're talking about the pier reaching out about approximately 110 feet.
That is correct. Now, the mooring piles on this are not shown, but they're 20 feet out from that structure, which is 90 feet long for a total of 110.
110 feet. And Dr. J.C. owns the land on the Down Creek side. Take your corner and go down his land.
His property line runs up this ravine and then cuts up this way, and he owns this parcel all the way up to Corbin Cove, and then he owns some other lands up here that were building lots that were cut off by Mr. Hatton.
Yeah, that's probably a mile away time to get, go around here.
Yeah, by the time that is.
And the closest house to the pier down Riverside would be the-
That would be Blackwell's right there.
Yeah, that would be-
And that's Persimmon Point down there.
That would be-
I didn't measure that, but that's a long-
So it's three quarters of a mile.
About 1,000 feet, yes.
There'll be no electricity on this pier, I-
No electricity, no water.
No overnight tying of boats?
No overnight mooring of boats.
And if you were to bring large sailboats in there, how many could you possibly get at one time?
Well, they won't fit in a 10-foot slip.
No, but you could get one across the end or something.
Maybe so.
Yeah, with that very limited-
Yeah, we're looking at, most of the sailboats that I've seen in the creek, they anchor up. This is mentioned in Chesapeake Bay Magazine that it's a great place for sailboats to anchor. There's plenty of deep-water coves all up and down the creek. On some holiday weekends, I've seen as many as 20 or more sailboats anchored up in the creek. And they get in their little boats and they ride around and they, you know, look at the surroundings and check things out. The water access that J.C. has used in the past has been through his private and property and his family's private property. So what we're trying to do now is to create a way for people to use this without having to use their private properties, which sometimes is just inconvenient.
So actually, the commercial aspect of the dock is merely to be able to get off the boat and-
Exactly. The commercial use is up at the restaurant and the-
Be no wine selling, trading, or mooring, or anything like that?
Nothing like that. And we'd be more than happy to proffer that.
Yes, in the conditional use.
Yes, sir.
The width of the longest portion of the dock is eight feet, is that right?
That is correct.
And why do you need eight feet instead of-
Well, we're thinking about folks getting off of boats and walking this way, and we're also thinking about people coming back to their boats, and we're just trying to make it comfortable for two different people walking in different directions to make sure it's safe. And we'll probably have a handrail on both sides anyway, so. But that was the concern, that we make it wide enough for that.
And a handrail on both sides would make it difficult for people getting on and off the boats, though, right?
No, the boats are gonna be on the, on the L head.
Just on the end?
Yes.
Do you have enough water for them to be on either side of the dock?
For the smaller boats, we do. Like if it's a rubber inflatable or hard bottom?
Something draw on three big oles probably, maybe?
Yeah.
On the sides?
You intend on having golf carts or something to-
He's gonna have a mode of transportation there to take people up to the restaurant and the winery.
Would they be on the dock or foot of the dock?
No, no golf carts on the dock. That was not our intent when we made it eight feet wide. And that's not, you know, a deal ender. If the board feels more comfortable with making it six feet wide, we're perfectly fine with that.
So in actuality, the closest neighbors are gonna be across the creek?
Yes. This, this home right here, and then there's a home right here, and there's some others that are upland, and then what was Mrs. Blackwell's is over there, and then you got the houses on Persimmon Point, and then way up the creek here is where we live. But there's, and then Dr. J.C. has several houses there for he and his family and his two daughters.
Could you point to the vineyard? Would you point to the vineyard, please?
Can't see it on that map.
It's, it'd be above.
Directly from here is directly right up here to head to that field.
The vineyard and the restaurant?
Yes.
The vineyard covers some 35, 40 acres of different fields, and the restaurant is, and the restaurant and the wine-making area is all the same right where he put it.
So you're gonna have a means of transportation from the dock up-
That is correct.
Up there, 'cause it's, it's a pretty good little hike up-
It would be a considerable hike.
Yes, it is.
You know, to have to walk. So it's, it's his intent that he'll have some type of golf cart or four-wheel or whatever to convey people up the hill.
Okay. All right. And your L head, that is what, that's 12 feet wide?
I'm sorry, the L head is 12.
12 by 30.
12 by 30.
Okay. All right, any other questions before opening the public hearing?
Thank you all very much.
Kim, let's get this public hearing going, and we'll get back to you. First person on the sign-up sheet tonight is Anna Ransom. Hi.
I am the adjacent landowner to this property. The first problem I have with all this is that the first notification I had was a letter from VMRC to my mother, not to me. She has never owned the adjacent property, saying that he was gonna build this commercial pier. He said it's been approved by Wetlands and VMRC. I have been told that the adjacent landowners had to be notified, and we were not, my name is not on that permit, nor is my brother's, and we are the adjacent landowners. When I heard about this, I'm definitely against it. I'm the one who owns that next point over and all that land, then there's my mother's house, and, you know, and the fields back there. So as far as I've understood, the permit was incorrect to start with. Mrs. Blackwell, who hasn't been Blackwell for 30 years, she's Mrs. Cockrell, but she has never owned that land. My brother and I inherited it from my father. So the, someone didn't do the research when they were working on the permit. I also have a problem with the commercial dock on residential property. It's owned residential for a reason. I don't think there needs to be a commercial dock. He says that it's temporary and that they'd assure there'd be no overnight visitors. There is no one to make sure that happens. There's no way to, if it happens, who does, who enforces that? I think it will ruin a nice part of the creek. I've lived on, I've lived in that area. I grew up there. I now live in Lancaster, but I've owned that property. My family's owned it for my whole life, and I'm against this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next person is R. Paul Carey.
Paul Carey spoke on Bridge Creek.
Bridge Creek, yeah. Paul Carey, he's not here?
He spoke already.
Oh, he must've got signed up on the wrong, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah. Placed him in. Susan Wagner.
I'm a 12-year resident on Mill Creek. I'm one of the homes that sits in the cove opposite side of the proposed project that was not mentioned. I'm speaking on behalf of two families, the Wagner family and the Mian family on High Water Lane of Kilmarneck. We're on the opposite side. The purpose of this permit request was to gain access to the vineyard and restaurant. It states that they have no other alternative, and this is not true. If you look at any of the J.C. Vineyard advertising, the 2022 June 22th Prop Top article begins, "One of the most accessible vineyards for boaters is J.C. Vineyard in Wycomico Church." And then it proceeds on in talking about how you have access to ability for parking at one of their three docks marked with the J.C. Vineyard signs. And that they talked about, there is plenty of room to anchor out deeper draft boats and docks for weary boaters to eagerly sample their homegrown varietals. J.C.'s own vineyard website states, linked from the Chesapeake Bay Wine Trail, that with seven docks on our own private cove, we are one of few vineyards nationwide which visitors can arrive by boat. And as you heard, he states that they are no longer going to be using them. However, in the May 24, 2024 Yelp advertising, the owner himself touts, "We have plenty of docks in our cove and are building a larger one creekside." Yet the permit states that there is no dock access, no boat access. There are multiple concerns about a commercial entity which intends to increase traffic on the creek and consequently limit the boatable waters for the rest of the residents here. The view that he showed from Google Maps does not do the location justice. What you need to look at is the NOAA nautical chart, where it shows you the shallow waters lining the shoreline, the curve of that, of that waterway, the adjacent pier. The pier that was demonstrated in his illustration, if you count three piers over, it belongs to the Mians. Their pier is only 60 feet long. Look at that illustration of their proposal to their, their pier, and you will see they look about the same size. This pier is not a small pier for dinghies. It is gonna be eight foot across. It is not a 90-foot pier or 110-foot pier. It is going to have a ramp, 90 feet of pier. You extend out another 20 feet, and then you hit the commercial pilings on the end. Add additional feet then for a dock that, or for a boat that might be docked at those end pilings. Now, the navigation through that area, I drive it all the time. We have a speedboat. This is one of our favorite and others on the creek, favorite water skiing areas to go up and down the creek. Now, Virginia Code says, "I cannot go faster than slow driving if I am 50 feet within a structure, a dock or a pier." On the opposite side of the creek, where this creek, where this pier comes out, is another residential pier. So now add 50 feet in addition to that 130 feet of the commercial proposed pier, and then add an additional 50 feet extending outward in the same area. Consider the shallow water, that sandbar he spoke of, the underground obstacles that he mentioned. There's a duck line, there's a curve, and you have significantly narrowed the ability of that waterway, and especially for high water, high-speed water sports. This is where we take our boat out and we go water skiing through there. We tube through there. So what you're in essence going to do with this thing, not to mention if additional non-resident boats come into the scene, there's going to be back and forth movement as they approach the dock. This is not a dinghy dock. We know what the proximity is by a code of your distance from another boat and the speed by which you can surpass them. So in essence, you are breaking the creek and forcing anyone who wants to water ski, tube, or whatever, to select one side or the other. They will no longer have the seamless path. Many people come to our creek for that reason, because it is a beautiful run through the water with a speedboat skiing or tubing. Okay? Another concern of ours is the contradiction of the Spirit of the Bay Act. He talked about they're gonna have a golf cart. Trees will have to come down. Where he indicated the vineyard was, was accurate. Where the restaurant was, their current location for docking for their vineyard is way beyond what you see on that illustration, and you have to walk. It's almost the opposite side of the property to get to the vineyard. A lot of trees are gonna be coming down. You're gonna have to grade a path for an ATV, for the golf cart, whatever. It's bringing the commercial entity to the, or to the waterfront. Third concern, commercialization of residential zoning. This is residential for a reason. Yes, they have their agricultural permits, whatever, up there. That's fine. You can already access it happily. What you're proposing to do is bring more people off the Chesapeake Bay into the local area, and once a conditional permit of commercialization is granted, where does this business scale next? They already rent villas, they have the winery, they're gonna have a restaurant, they've got this commercial dock. Anyone is foolish to think that this is for dinghies. This is not for dinghies. If you wanna go help out the boats that are mooring out further in the deeper water, why don't you hop in your boat and you go pick them up there? There are other solutions to this. Now, it definitely will alter the idyllic nature of the creek. Overnight mooring, yes, there's a sign. Again, how is that gonna be enforced? Virginia Code tells us that if you are intoxicated, you are not to be driving a boat. They have applied for, or have already received, an ABC license to sell wine, beer, and spirits. Now, I drink myself, and I know that not everybody that goes into a restaurant or bar gets intoxicated, but we all know many do. Now, what about the scenario when you have a boater who has come to this restaurant and they become intoxicated? Where do you think that boat is gonna be overnight? What do you do in the scenario where you have a boater come in that wants to rent the villa? It's all over their advertising, "Come in off the creek," or "Come in off the bay. Stay in our villas. We got plenty of room." Where is that boat gonna be parked? Oops, it's just one night. Well, one night creeps into two nights, creeps into weeks, creeps into whatever else. And the, the scaling, this business seems to want to be scaling piece by piece, by getting exceptions to current code and whatever. They say four slips. Boy, you wasted money on a large dock for four slips, four dinghies. I could put four dinghies in this space right here. I could put four dinghies in this space right here. They want the big boats. Why not? They're a business. I am not, we are not against a business trying to do better. But when they bring that business to the waterfront, they now are encroaching on every resident of Mill Creek, and it must remain residential. If by some unfortunate chance that this does become permitted, we have conditions that are to be enforced. No overnight mooring, no electric, no water, no sanitation, no lighting, no fueling, no provisioning of boats, no pier events or parties, and do not establish a no-wake zone around a commercial pier that you are building. That is probable that happens around commercial piers. Once you get the boats in, again, by code, we've got no wake zones that you can establish. That brings every other boater to a halt through their area to accommodate their customers. The, a lot was omitted on that permit. A lot was disingenuous. Take a look at the NOAA nautical chart, and you look at the realistic measurements of how much space boaters are going to have in that waterway. Not to mention the lighting. What kind of lighting gets to be permitted on a commercial dock? It's now commercial. Are we all going to be in daylight 24 hours a day? The most beautiful part of that creek is the ability to look up and see the stars. Don't ruin it. Don't let one business and their desire to grow encroach upon every other residential right on that creek.
Thank you. Next person is Patrick Neal.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm going to read if that's okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about this commercial pier application. My name is Patrick Neal, and we live on Thornneck Point on Mill Creek. I'm from Washington, and I've owned two different properties in North Almond County. We bought the first in Edwardsville around 2006 or so, and then we bought the point on Mill Creek just before the pandemic. I care very much about the future of this creek, as everyone here does. I've, excuse me, I have my master's in urban environment planning from UVA. I've served on the board of the Northern Neck Land Conservancy. None of this really matters. I just offer it as a background. So I'll get to the point. Excuse me. Everyone on the lower Northern Neck knows how special this creek is. Those cruising the bay do as well. They know about its beauty and its deep water and its vast scenic vistas. In the interest of brevity, I won't list all the factors that make it desired. She did a very good job. Make it a desired overnight anchorage for boaters. Most people here know them well. But I will say, Damrin Marsh and Senator Tribble's significant conservation easement on huge stacks of land are, of course, the most important. They're an enormous benefit to every resident who owns land on this creek as well as visitors. But the most relevant attribute for this discussion tonight is that there are no commercial piers on this creek. There is no Horn Harbor on this creek, that I know of at least. Most creeks have several, some have many, but we don't. I fully understand the right to explore. Virginia waterways belongs to all. We often have boats anchored in the waters around us, as everyone does. Does that mean we're actively looking to have more on this creek? More and bigger raft ups too? Additional, additional commercial piers for whatever attraction or service or wine they may provide will mean more transient visitors and more overnight anchors. This is not an application for a commercial pier on a commercial parcel for a farmer to move grain or for a waterman to move crabs. It's a commercial pier on R2 land for largely transient visitors. In the interest of being reasonable, I fully understand that bringing more and more people to a marina or a bar is not the intent of the applicant. But maybe it is, to your point. I understand, though, many may think otherwise. I understand a marina is not what we're allegedly talking about here, but we did mention Horn Harbor. I'd be very opposed to that, let me tell you, as I bet every resident of the creek would be. But I'm concerned about a future owner or an expansion utilizing and attempting to expand what would be then an already existing commercial pier permit. The issuance of a commercial pier permit or even a conditional use permit on R2 could very well be the first step towards the future, albeit maybe unintended result of several more commercial piers, i.e. more boat traffic. To me, it is extremely significant that there are none on this creek. That's unusual, and it's rare, and I care about that. And I'm fairly certain that most residents of this pristine creek do not want a commercial pier permit on an R2 parcel across from them either. A commercial pier is not a commercial pier in name only. It's not a residential pier. I'm concerned about precedent and the next commercial pier applicant. I think the spot chosen is a really lovely place for a residential pier, but he already has several, four, seven, I don't know. Am I happy about potentially having more boats visiting this creek? No, to be honest, but that's my own opinion. Would I be happy with the zoning change from R2 to commercial? No way. Doesn't it seem possible that it might be a desired attempt of a future owner of this parcel with a commercial pier permit already in hand? Perhaps a conditional use permit that expires with the transfer of the sale of the property alleviates some of these concerns? Maybe. Not to me. I recognize that we live on the site of the historic granary that was referenced, a structure built by Ann's dad and a hugely impressive effort with local farmers. Its history is of great interest and value to us. It has been about a half a century since this was in use. That's a long time. That's before R2 zoning or zoning at all, before conditional use permits, before the RPA setback, before the Chesapeake Bay Act, before a lot of development pressure, before Damrin Marsh was protected, before conservation easements, before Harmony Hall and Mill Creek Lane. In short, before large parts of the creek were residential. So it's really not relevant at all. I live there, I know.
Mr. Neal, can you kind of wrap it up?
I'm almost done. Yes, please. The concrete remains from this historic operation were a huge job to clean up, but I knew that it was worth it, and trusted it us. We were lucky to know David Hudnall, who farms the point, and I think the only one who I really trusted to do this carefully. I'll close in saying that I lived on and managed to farm in Middleburg, Virginia in the late 80s. I experienced Loudoun County explode almost overnight. It was incredible. Once it starts, it starts with a vengeance, but it can also start with a trickle. My concern is commercialization of Mill Creek and the precedent a commercial pier may set for more commercial piers. That's it. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, next person is Ann Parker.
I apologize, I'm very nervous. My name is Ann Parker. I am a property owner and full-time resident directly across from where this pier would be. It's hard to see in that picture, but my view out of every window would face this pier exactly.
So you're all across the creek?
I'm on Highwater Lane directly across the creek. And I have, there've been people who've spoken to these issues before, but you know, I had made my notes. I, I'm very concerned about precedent, about what could happen to a pier granted with conditional use. What happens when J.C. decides to change his business model? What happens when it's no longer J.C.'s property? This is my, my deep concern. He does, according to his website, have three or seven docks currently. I'm not sure which is true, but it's on his website if you look. One page says three, one page says seven. I heard this gentleman mention that there would not be any electricity, lighting, plumbing, or whatsoever, and that is a huge concern for me. I, if any of you have ever been on Mill Creek, light pollution is rampant now, but any of you my age or older who remember what it was like when you were a kid down here, how many stars you can't see now that you could see when you were young. Mill Creek is still, I think, one of our darkest creeks. It's a beautiful place, and I am deeply concerned that even if they don't put lighting on it, that somebody after them would. And I don't know how assurances can be made if you grant it that that doesn't happen, but that's my deep concern for me and for all the creatures great and small is keeping our skies dark. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person is Henry Lucas.
Good evening. My name is Henry Lucas. I live 386 Mill Creek Farm Road, which is actually at the very end of the Mill Creek. And there are three houses built down there that have been built in the last 15 years or so. Ours was the first, and a lot of the comments that were made about the boating and utilization is in fact very true, and that is, I would say, a very important point. But what I would like to say is, you know, number one, I'm not opposed to the pier, either conceptually or actually. It sounds like it's very similar to my pier as far as size. I don't have the commercial docking post, of course, the piling, but other than that, I've been to J.C. Tavern, I've started winery many times for lunch with friends and family. I'm not opposed to it in any way. It's classic mom and pop winery, in my opinion. I think it's a good amenity to have in the area. And I've actually docked at one of the, the piers that was mentioned previously when, I guess, family members would allow people to dock there, and we did one time. So all those things I think are good. My concern is the issue of the commercial pier. I think what it has the potential for is opening it up for something we may not want and something that, you know, you may not have considered. I think it sets a precedent with regard to future use. As long as it's a winery that Dr. J.C. is running, I don't think there's a big concern, certainly not on my part, that it's going to be some sort of crazy situation. I mean, I don't think it's going to be a Horn Harbor. I don't think it's going to be Tim's River Shore, seven, eight, or nine, which is what they're up to or anything like that. But I believe that the condition of the dock should be such that it is tied not only to the winery and a facility like that, but perhaps even to the current ownership of that land so that, you know, when eventually, if the family doesn't want to continue to run the winery after Dr. Casey is no longer available to run it, J.C. rather, my concern is that you could have outside investors come in with a talented zoning attorney and make a very strong argument that with commercial dock, previous utilization as a winery, the liquor license, then they should have the right to put, build a larger facility. And I think that's the risk that, I know my two neighbors who I've talked to share that what it's opening up is the possibility that in the future, be that one year from now or 10 years from now, there may be a situation where the county is forced to allow utilization of that in a manner that's not considered right now. So I think the conditional use should be very tight. I would suggest it gets tied to things like, you know, a winery, perhaps some sort of seating capacity, perhaps even to the current ownership of the property, the people that are there right now. Because I think that's the door that's being opened by having that commercial pier unresidential tied to a winery that's already existence, winery slash restaurant, and also with the liquor license that you have, I think a very strong argument could be made, which could be defended legally, that the next logical step is something that we perhaps don't want down there. So that's my opinion, and that's why I'm not opposed to this. But I think it really needs to be very tightly crafted so that the intent is, of which I think the board probably shares perhaps, is not a bad intent because I think it's a good amenity to have down there. But what happens five to 10 years from now? That's my big concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next person is Ann Thondyke. Is this real son? Retina? I'm sorry, I just can't read the last part very well.
I am not a resident on Mill Creek right now, but I grew up on Mill Creek. It's pretty much the way it was when I was growing up. It's very nice, it's serene, it's quiet. I don't understand why they have to build a dock to take people a long distance when they can use the docks that are already there. They don't need a nine-foot wide, eight-foot wide dock unless you're going to take the golf carts down there. And what's to say they're not going to use solar lights to light that dock? Light pollution. I live over on Barrett Creek right now. The light pollution is horrible. People leave their lights on all night long on a quiet creek like Barrett Creek. There's no traffic going in there at night. Why do they have to leave their dock lights on? I'm right across from Horn Harbor. I can see the lights from Horn Harbor at my house on Barrett Creek, and I'm looking across the peninsula, but I can still see those lights over there. And believe me, it's light pollution. He's got the docks, it's a family business, use those docks to serve the winery. Look at the distance they'd have to go. Why go that far distance when they can just go right there from their own docks that they already have? It's a heck of a lot cheaper. And I agree with everything that everyone has said already. I mean, I love that creek. I wish I could still live there. Don't let them mess it up.
All right, thank you. Next persons are Nancy and Danny Kisser.
I signed something, I didn't know what it was.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, there's one big point that I need to make. I spoke with Paul Tribble today. He came to speak to me, and he said, "You have my property," so he's against it.
Okay.
He left his property on Mill Creek, up on the bay, everybody knows Paul Tribble, and he said, "No."
All right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next person is Andrea Levine. Got you on the right sign-up sheet this time. That's all right.
Don't do this very often, which is also why I'll be reading. First of all, I'd like to say that on Monday, a letter was sent. My name was on it, along with 15 others who were opposed with conditions that they would perhaps accept. I since then changed my mind to be fully opposed to this. I'm a homeowner on Mill Creek. I was in 2008. My husband and I built a house in Harveys Creek, and when the opportunity arose to move to Mill Creek, we jumped on it because, as everybody has said, it is one of the most beautiful pristine creeks in the area. There are no commercial docks on Mill Creek, and I'm concerned that if this dock is approved, it might be setting a precedent. I have sat on commissions in Richmond. I am in real estate. There's something called non-conforming use, and this is non-conforming, in my opinion. Furthermore, there is, as everybody has stated, easy access to the vineyard via land or water, which in my opinion deems this proposed dock unnecessary. Once a year, many residents in our neighborhood, and myself included, boat to the vineyard and safely navigate and tie off to one of their multiple docks. And the same can be said for different cruising clubs, which also I'm a member of one of them. And then there's also one from Annapolis that comes down that somebody here actually took a photo of, and we looked at the number of boats, and maybe there were 12 rafted, I would say. I have never witnessed 25 anchored boats on our creek since we've been there in the past four years. Currently, the vineyard operation is pretty low-key, so it Currently, the vineyard operation is pretty low-key, so it has little to no negative impact for nearby neighbors. But will a commercial dock change this and impose a greater impact for residents on our creek? Another concern is future use, as other people have stated, and the attached land. Yes, any kind of commercial operation proposal would require a different permit, but already having the dock in place would have one less hurdle to achieve this. I'm not alone in believing this could have a significant impact on our pristine creek. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next person is Kent Ains.
My name is Kent Ains. I'm a resident of Mill Creek, and I don't want the evening to drag on any longer for everyone, so everything that I wanted to say has been said. I just wanted to stand up and say I'm also opposed to the commercial pier. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah. My name is Don Shallen. I live directly across from the docks that they do have. I'm not going to, I put my name on that I accept the pier. I don't want my name on there, number one. I'm not going to say I oppose it, but I have a question. What I don't understand is, how can you give someone a commercial dock license for a piece of property to serve a business not connected? That property is not, does not, to my knowledge, belong to the winery. So you're offering to put, give permission for a commercial dock to a piece of property that they are now going to allow a winery to come through their property to use this dock? That makes no sense to me. And I would think that would be illegal, but I may be wrong. I've lived down here for almost thirty years, and I've never heard of something like this.
He owns the property, sir.
I know he owns the property, but it's not for the winery. It's not winery property. He's using it, as stated by this gentleman, for the winery, so it becomes a business use. So what you're saying is, you can use it as a business use. I would think you would need to, the property should be owned by the winery also.
The winery and the property is all owned by Dr. J.C.
It's not the old school.
But it's not.
It's not Zell. It's a residential.
It's an R2.
It's been R2 since it only took place in 1972.
So then, so then the question is, is, since they already have some docks, why do you need a commercial? Let them have a regular dock. Why does it need to be a commercial? That's the question I have, and it makes no sense to me. Now, if he can do all of this dockage through a normal, regular dock, then that's the process to go, and probably pulls the teeth out of a lot of people's arguments. I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't, I just realize a lot of people probably don't like me because I have lights on on my dock. And I'm, so, you know, we're all learning, and I'm not here to pull people's teeth or whatever and stir a pot, but that's something I don't understand, and it makes no sense of why you would give a commercial dockage to a regular property.
Perhaps Mr. McKinley can address that question.
Sure.
Could we have staff speak to that point also, maybe?
Yeah. We can have staff speak.
This is in regards to the commercial pier on the point separate from the.
From the vineyard, yeah.
I mean, because he owns both pieces of parcel, then, no, that parcel isn't tied to the winery, but he would still be allowed, I mean, this is why we have this process, to be able to put a commercial pier on a parcel of land. Whether it's merged together or not, that's why we have this process.
So are you saying that even if the vineyard wasn't there, he could still come before us with this permit for a commercial pier on that property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
Here's my name.
No. No, ma'am. You've already spoken once.
I've spent my time.
Yeah, I know, and I gave you a lot of time.
Ma'am, you've spoken too.
I didn't use all my time, and I just.
No, ma'am. It's only one time. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You haven't spoken, so I'll let you speak, sir. I need, come on up and state your name and I'll, sir. You're next.
I have a quick question. On the application, it specifically says that the cost of this dock, this pier, commercial pier, is $30,000. Would somebody in the room, please, tell me where you can build a ninety-foot commercial pier for $30,000? Those residents here that have already improved their dock or have replaced, like ourselves, we came very close to $30,000, and we have a residential dock. So I think the $30,000 quote on that application is an attempt to minimalize what the impact this commercial dock will be.
All right. Can we get your name, sir? Yes. Sir, what's your name and I'll?
Your name.
We need your name, name and address.
M.E.E.H.I.N. Williams, and I don't need a microphone. On the 234 Eyewater Lane, Waterfront there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Next.
My name's Tommy Byrne. Full disclosure on the CFO, or acting CFO, of the vineyard. I want to just address a couple things, hopefully clear up a couple things. These are neighbors and friends. They are reacting mostly what I would have reacted as well, had someone come to me and said, "Commercial dock." Until you know exactly what it means, privileges of, restrictions thereof as well, you don't know what you're getting. My family has lived directly, that entire, we're that closest pier across. From that point to the falling point was my grandfather bought in the twenties. So we've been there for the better part of a hundred years. It's now split down the center, and I'm on the left. From my, from my point, I can't see where the dock will end. I know that as a fact because they've put, when they're surveying it, they put stakes or tubing in it. To this gentleman's comment, as CFO, I have seen the cost of the dock, and it comes in a fair amount under $30,000. It's not, it's not a fancy dock. Sorry, but I'll be happy to disclose that to you if you'd like to come by. The issue about the existing docks, and there are three working docks. There are a few other docks that have been planted and been built, have been torn down, but they're still there because that, those properties have been divided. Dr. J.C.'s family, as they grow older, are coming down more. I think he's trying to make that a little more private for them. Ergo, this new dock. The distance between, you're right, it is a further distance, but it is not, it's not, it's a great walk, and people coming off of sailboats have been sailing all day long, or all week long, are looking for that. And trees are not coming down to build a road. If you see that white stripe straight down there, that's a road. Then, right along that tree line is a gravel road. And the right, where you can see it even, it turns right down, that is a lane, you know, a forest woods lane, which has been traveled on his golf carts and four-wheel gators for, I don't know, how many years. So nothing's going to have to be built or driven, and there's no way that a golf cart will go down onto the dock. That's just not even in the books. As far as the, let me just back up one moment. I adore Mill Creek, and I wouldn't want anything to happen to it, to change the beauty, the darkness, or anything like that. I totally am a hundred percent behind anyone who's mentioned anything of that nature. And if I thought for a moment that that was anywhere in the cards, I would have walked away, and I'd be on the other side. Dr. J.C. and I are very good friends, so I am helping him out with this. The water skiing and the tubing, I don't see how that can be affected. I used to sit in that point as a little boy and watch these hundred-and-fifty-long flap-bottom tankers come in and wash the grain.
Biggest one was a hundred feet.
Hundred feet, okay, well, I was twelve, and they looked bigger. That wasn't, it wasn't slight toward that. Where I was going with that was, I loved it. I have the fondest memories of watching these things come out with, in a scale of freeboard like that, and then overnight having all this grain pumped into them, and then freeboard going out like that. It was, it was magical to me. Not that this dock can be compared to that, because with that, you don't get overnight staying, and anybody who finds a boat that stayed overnight will be the first ones to make sure that that is taken care of. We don't want that. It's primarily for transient boaters, rubber dinghies, and all the surrounding creeks who want to come for a lunch and park their boat there. I wish there were a few more of these. There's one thing that was brought up a number of times that I found intriguing, and I'm not talking for Dr. J.C., I'm talking for myself, tying future use. I found that an intriguing idea. I don't know if it's, I haven't thought it through, but that might have been something I would have gotten behind. But aside from that, this is not going to be a commercial dock which is going to be bringing tiki bar nonsense of motorcycle gangs and chains and drunkenness. You can, you cannot take drink off of the vineyard tasting room. You can't, let me rephrase, you can't take spirits off that. You've always been able to take wine. And to address the, right before I get up here, it is, it's got a farm winery license, which allows the entire property owned by the farm, which includes the vineyard and all of this property on the shoreline, allows people to walk around with wine. That's just the way it's licensed. I don't think anybody here can tell me that they've actually ever seen anybody walking around with wine. As someone else pointed out, it is a fair amount of trek to do it in the first place. Most people would like to walk around the vineyards. So I don't think that is going to change, other than there will be onboarding and offboarding of people coming to the, to the winery. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes. Hi. My name is Bryneth Brennan, and I've lived in Northumberland County for twenty, last twenty years. And I'm going to be really short, just to say that the majority of people here who live on Mill Creek are just saying that what they don't want is a commercial pier. They have nothing against the winery or anything else. So I hope that you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak? Anyone online tonight that would like to speak on this issue of Dr. Is that anybody?
Somebody knows. I'll get back to you.
Anyone online tonight would like to speak? All right. Sir?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley, hold on just one second. I got one more.
I couldn't tell who you're from.
That's all right.
I'm Al Ransome, and I've been a native here all my life. And I do have a question about the commercial pier. And no lighting, no electricity, no water. I believe it's some building codes that require that for the safety because it is commercial. So.
I'm not sure. I'm just not sure.
What I'm saying is, if you can't, if you're not going to have it, how can you build it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Yep. I'd like to have an answer from staff. Staff have an answer for us?
Not in regards to the building code. I do not, no.
Speak into the microphone, please, and speak up.
I don't have an answer in regards to what the building code requires on a commercial pier. I don't, no.
I have no idea. I have no idea.
Need to research.
We can research it. All right. Do I have anyone else would like to speak? All right. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. McKinley, would you like some closing marks, remarks?
Yeah, I just have one comment. When we started this process, I was only given two choices. It was a private, non-commercial pier, or it was a commercial pier. I had applied for it as a private pier. The comments tonight would have, you know, it's not a private pier, it's being used by the restaurant or the winery. So it'd be on the safe side. We considered it as a commercial pier, knowing we had the conditional use for that process to go through. So that's why we chose the word "commercial," but there's no commercial activity going on at the pier. The commercial entity is the restaurant and the winery, not the pier. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
A couple of things I'd like to address if I could.
Yes, you can.
There were some questions about the trees being cut down, and I think Mr. Byrne's and staff, and I know also the roads are already back there, there wouldn't be any trees cut down. There's roads all the way around the whole, the whole perimeter and all the way up to the.
Let me try that. Better? Okay. There were some questions about the roads. Okay. And trees being cut down. The trees that need to be cut down have been cut down many years ago because there's roads, there was logging back there, and the roads, they have perimeter roads around the whole place, whole section of it, so there wouldn't be any more trees. There was question about who's going to enforce the no nighttime tying up. That question was asked. And the county also has docks where we don't allow nighttime tying up, and that's enforced by the Marine Police. Phone call is put into the dispatcher, they send out the people out there, the people are fined, ticketed, or warned, whatever the Marine Police decide to do. There was question about would he put up a no-wake sign? He cannot put up a no-wake legal sign. That has to be done by the Department of Gaming and Fisheries, and it has to be sanctioned by the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors, which would have a public hearing just like we're having tonight. So there wouldn't be no arbitrary, no-wake signs. I don't think Dr. J.C. would want that anyway, in my, my talking with him. No electricity, what it would cost to put electricity down, it would be, God knows what it would cost. Just running up the road a couple of hundred feet costs thousands and thousands of dollars. There was something said about perhaps he would have solar lights down there. I haven't heard, I haven't heard him say anything about that. Have you said anything about solar lights or nighttime, nighttime activity of any kind?
We just have to be concerned about the safety of the clients that are using it.
Okay.
If you use.
Okay. And the Army Corps of Engineers has already signed off on it, so they feel there's no navigation problems or any type there? Okay. Conditional use, now, it's, it's my understanding that this board has the authority to put what they want in conditional use. And I heard several people say they wouldn't have too much problem with this if certain conditional uses were put in. One of those conditional uses that the pier would be permitted on a conditional use could be permitted as a commercial pier to Dr. could be permitted as a commercial pier to Dr. J C only, non-transferable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Non-transferable, I mean, with to him and nobody else. Would that be correct? Would you want to comment on that?
Yes, oftentimes localities... Okay, sorry. Oftentimes localities will impose a condition upon these kinds of permits, meaning to the extent that the conditional use permit expires upon transfer of the property. So that, so the new owner then would have to reapply.
Reapply, along with many things that could be put in on conditional use. And then one lady read off a complete list there, which I think is very appropriate. I'm just trying to get the facts out, ma'am. Well, I'm trying to get both sides of this. Yeah, okay, well...
All right, Mr. Fisher, carry on.
Well, Mr. McKinley, tell me, are they planning on using this pier at nighttime?
I'm not sure what time, maybe Mr. Burns does the time that the restaurant closes. Right now, the restaurant closes at 5:00. The only times it's open at night, in the moment anyway, is 5:00 to 8:30 on a Friday.
Friday is... Is it Friday in December?
Yeah.
Right, so Friday in December, 5:00 it starts.
I don't know how many boats we've ever seen come through the town, but I'll take that up.
Well, that's all I have. This board has the opportunity to go along with a commercial pier, a non-commercial pier, or no pier.
And you're not going with the product.
I would think that would be Mr. McKinley...
He already, I'm just trying to show a compromise.
Sure, sure.
He already said he came with two ways, and he only went one way because he thought that he wouldn't allow, and there would be a problem, give him the product, and all everything that we saw. What about the fact that the adjacent landowner was not comfortably being notified?
Can you address that, sir?
Yes.
That the adjacent...
The original... That's ridiculous.
Go ahead. All right, Mr. McKinley, go ahead and comment on that, please.
When I looked in the tax records, it was listed as Mrs. Blackwell, however many times she was married, and in care of Mrs. Ransome. So we discovered from Philip that the property that's directly adjacent belonged to Mrs. Ransome and Mr. Blackwell. So a new notice was sent out from V M R C to that specific person or persons. Realizing that the first one may have been an error, a second notice was sent out directly to them from V M R C.
The tax records have never shown that Mrs. Blackwell or Mrs. Popple owned that property. She has never owned it.
All right.
And V M R C sent it out when I called them. The county notified my brother and I, because the lady who does notifications, and I don't know who it is, says she looks it up on her own, because a lot of times the permits are incorrect, and it was incorrect.
But they got notes here regardless.
Not before the Virginia Marine Corps or anybody else.
All right. Now, the matter here is before the board. Does the board have any more comments, questions, or anything that they need? Or what is the pleasure of the board? Does the board need more time to think about it? What was that suggestion, Mr. Long?
Yes, I think we need to table it. Give the little boy information.
I've gone clear as to...
You do have that option.
Sorry.
Mr. Williams, would you comment in the back?
I'd like for Mr. Gregory to clarify how the conditional use permit would expire with the sale of this property, if the property was sold, and then the new owner would have to reapply, even though the dock was already there?
Correct. So you could impose a condition upon the permit such that the condition expires upon the transfer, sale, or transfer of the property to a new owner. So then, the commercial, the conditional use permit allowing a commercial pier, the pier would still be there, but they wouldn't be able to use it for the commercial purposes because the permit would have expired. So they would have to apply for a new permit. That's a fairly common practice.
That has been done quite often of items.
There is also a recent court decision that recognizes, this has been somewhat of a running argument in Virginia, but a recent court decision clarified that conditional use permits also can be granted for a period of years. So you could grant a conditional use permit for 10 years, 20 years, you know, however long you might think reasonable. And then, once that condition, once that permit would expire, then they would, prior to the expiration, they'd have to apply for a new one, or for a renewal, rather, in order to continue with that use.
Did I answer your question?
It does.
All right, any other questions from the board members?
If we were to table this, what are we waiting to hear more about? What are we considering?
That is for us to decide now. What information do we need? Or do we just need to think about it?
I would say we need to think about it.
Well, it's up to the board here.
If they're going to move forward with the commercial pier, a question has been asked about the requirements or restrictions, as far as lighting, or what have you, when it comes to the safety issues, as far as the commercial pier. So we got, that has to be answered, has to be researched, in my opinion.
All right, well, one thing about safety. If it's dark at 5:00 and somebody goes down to the dock, that's a safety issue. If it's dark at 9:00, somebody goes to the dock, that's a safety issue, with no lights.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, if we approve a commercial pier, and we don't approve or state in the conditional use permit what needs to be there for the safety, then we have approved a pier that's, it causes a problem.
Well, we can take more time. If you want to table it, take more time, come up with, give us a chance to come up with some conditions.
The conditions are weak.
Mr. Chairman? If I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I might suggest that...
Well, sir, you go right on. Always want to hear from you.
You could defer action on this application until potentially the next meeting. That might, and it's just me talking, but that might allow an opportunity for the applicant and his representative to work on potential conditions that could address some of the concerns posed by the neighbors. I'm not saying that their concerns will ever be totally resolved. I don't know if that's possible, but perhaps some conditions could be suggested by the applicant that they would be willing to accept that may resolve some of those issues. Perhaps, you know, the fact that they obviously agreed that they're not going to put electricity on the pier, or water, or other things, you know, they could put that in writing, be more clear about that. Perhaps limiting the size of the pier, as they suggested they might be willing to do, down from what was in the application. Some other things, you know, I don't know, I don't want to speculate, but those are just some things that came up this evening that might be able to be addressed if they had a little bit more time, and to hone them down. Given the sensitivity and the concerns, and I would suggest that if you're going to try to craft some conditions to impose it not be done, you know, on the fly, as it were, right? You know, you don't want to do that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Would the board permit us to have it classified as a product here, as opposed to a commercial pier?
I think that would be a good suggestion. Yes, you're concerned to do that.
Table it, because it looks like all problems go away when it becomes private.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that's possible, given the...
Given the application?
Given the application, the size of the structure that they're proposing, and also the fact that another regulatory agency has already dealt with this to a certain extent. But certainly want to look at that. But I think, again, that would require a little bit more time as well.
Yeah, we'll table it.
Well, like Mr. Long's been saying, I'm not ready to make a decision. And I don't know who else wants to do it, but I would suggest that we table this till our June meeting, or else our July meeting, if it's, if we need to. We just need to make a decision tonight on to it. I'd like to make a motion that we table it, if that's what it takes.
Second.
Table it to our June meeting, which would be, oh, Lord, what is it?
Our regular meeting's on the 13th.
13th. 13th. All right, Mr. Fisher, that's your motion. Yes, sir. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. 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 Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you all for coming to this hearing. We'll look back at this on June 13th at 7:00 P.M. All right, let's get on to our next one here. All right, next one is a request by Charles Williams. Philip?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Charles H. Williams III, owner, for a conditional use permit to install a boat canopy on property Zoned R2 Residential Waterfront. Property is shown as tax parcel 38-1-303A and is located at 386 Seaboard Drive.
All right. I don't see Mr. Williams here tonight. Anybody representing him here? Nobody? All right. Board have any comments, questions before opening the public hearing? All right. I'll open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet. Would anybody like to speak? Anyone like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world tonight, anyone that's online tonight, like to speak on Mr. Williams's conditional use permit? Anyone online tonight like to speak about Mr. Williams's conditional use permit? All right, public hearing's closed, matters before the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
What's the conditions on?
Mr. Marston, would you read the conditions?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies. The boat canopy shall be situated as shown on the joint permit application, and the boat canopy shall be well-maintained from damage and shall be replaced if tearing occurs that could cause a nuisance.
All right, you've heard the conditions. I'll make a motion that we approve this request with the conditions that were just read. I'll second it. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against, or all those that...
I abstain.
Abstain. All right. You can tell Pop he got it.
Will do.
All right. Next is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Glad to see you tonight, sir.
Yes, sir. A revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance, Section 148-155, solar energy facilities, to increase the minimum setback from 25 feet to 50 feet, revise the first decommissioning plan review period to two years after completion and thereafter every five years, and to state that after decommissioning plan review, that if the cost of the decommission has increased, then the decommissioned surety must also increase by the same amount. I've received no correspondence for or against this, and Mr. Marston as well is not receiving a correspondence.
All right, does the board have any questions, comments for Mr. McKinley?
What's the setback?
50 feet. It's 25 now, goes to 50.
What's the 25 feet, the 50, what's the 50 feet setback from what?
From property lines, neighboring property lines. Minimum is a 25 feet, so basically, that's as low as somebody can appeal, but you can go forward from that if you want to. And we increased it to 50 feet because we require a 25-foot vegetated buffer. So if we had a 25-foot setback, if you all choose to do the minimum, which, you know, you may or may not do, that with 25 feet, and trying to create a 25-foot buffer in 25 feet, it's not enough room. You've got to have extra room, so that's why we went to 50 feet.
But the setback from the ditch line, from the roadway, is still the 200 foot?
Yes, sir. That's not, the only thing I mentioned were the changes that were being made. The other, the previous 200 feet back from state highway stays the same.
Okay.
And that minimum, you know, that's just, if you all want to decrease it to that, but the minimum doesn't, you can do 75 feet, 100 foot, whatever y'all feel is appropriate. It's just that the minimum would be increased to 50 feet, so that would be the closest they could get to a property line.
All right, any other questions? All right, open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone like to speak on the solar issue? All right, would anyone online tonight like to speak on the solar issue? Anyone online like to speak about the solar ordinance change? All right, close the public hearing, and matters before the board.
The board will approve the zoning ordinance change.
You approve the change in the zoning ordinance from 25 to 50 feet?
Right.
All right. We've got a motion, do I have a second? I'll second it. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against? All right. Next one.
The next, if you recall, the board supervisors asked the planning commission to review the zoning ordinance, and after that review, we, the planning commission noted that office buildings were allowed by right in R1 and R2. R1 is residential general, and R2 is residential waterfront. The planning commission felt that office buildings should be by right, and therefore that's the reason for this change, a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance, Section 148, to revise Attachment A Usage Table for office buildings, to change it from a by-right use in R1 residential general and R2 residential waterfront to conditional use in R1 and R2. So basically, it's not going to change the ordinance at all, but just the usage table that would change the usage from a permitted use to a conditional use, so that the neighborhood could weigh in on a new office building coming in a residential area.
All right, any questions from the board? No questions from the board? All right. Have no one on the sign-up sheet? Would anyone like to speak? Anyone like to speak? Would anyone online like to speak tonight about the zoning change here for office buildings? Anyone online like to speak? All right, close the hearing. Public hearing, the matters before the board.
I'll move to approve.
I got a motion and a second to approve the change. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against? All right. All right. Next item would be consideration of Northumberland County capital improvement plan.
Yes, sir. The, the planning commission recommended, uh, uh, the approval of the capital improvement plan to be sent to the board of supervisors. The, the capital improvement subcommittee worked with all department heads with regards to their needs and approved, um, uh, some projects and other projects, they, they felt were, there were other ones that were more important. So, basically prioritized the projects for the, for the capital improvement plan. I, I, the EMS sanitation, sheriff's office, and Northumberland Public Schools, all submitted projects, and I don't think we wanna go into the individual project, projects, but the spreadsheet displays all the projects and the costs entailed. The total for fiscal year '25 would be $2,790,363, and as you all know, if it, even though it's in the comprehen, I mean, in the capital improvements plan, does not mean it's guaranteed funding by the board of supervisors. And I've received no correspondence regarding the capital improvement plan either.
So, your total tonight, Mr. McKensley, is, uh, 2, 2,790?
Yes, sir, at $363.
At $63, okay.
Did we have some left over?
Well, some of, there, some of it is, the EMS is self-funded through the ambulance fees, so that's $100,000. The school construction fund is gonna pay for some of these projects, and that's $1,278,874. And then there's some other capital reserve funds, so it's significantly lower than 2,790, but the total cost of that, the amount of money the county's gonna have to fund is gonna be less than that. Now, that is if the board decides to fund all the projects, which is under your discretion.
Well, like you said, some of them already have, have identified the, the money to pay for their project.
Yes, sir, and that's what we encourage department heads to try to do.
So, I guess we really need a breakdown on what the difference of that's gonna be now. But the majority of it, from what I see, is, is self-funded, either by federal funds or by the, the revenue recovered from EMS.
Okay. All right. Even if, if we approve this, if we approve to go with this right now, still doesn't mean we're gonna fund everything.
Right, but I, I don't see us ending up getting not funding something that already has a funding for it.
Oh, if it has a funding for it, it's a different thing. It's what doesn't have a funding.
You're right, and it's, yeah, I agree.
Any other questions from the board? Kenzie, you got any other comments you wanna make?
No, sir. I didn't know if Mr. Basie had any, any insight he'd like to add.
So, we noted that the school construction fund here is 1,278 and change. That is the total of the amount of projects that the schools, system submitted to us that they identified possibly using the school construction funds. The amount of construction funds is a little bit less, and I don't wanna say it's like 1.1 million ballpark. Off the top of my head, I don't remember that magical number, but I, but I do know they identified more than they had in school construction funds, and they were gonna try to find ways to get those back down to, to where if they did all of them, they would still be just using school construction funds for their projects that they identified as such.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Don't have anybody on the sign-up sheet?
Yes, you do.
I do. Where's the sign-up sheet? Hold on. You speaking up, you signed up for something, hold on. Where's the sheet? Hold on.
Just, just write a name on the blank.
Come on, speak, here it is. Come on, come on, Miss, come on, Dr. Pike.
Dr. Pika, uh, still wanna-
Sorry.
Still wanna drive me to still Virginia. Actually, I rise in support of this plan, and y'all don't hear me talk about supporting a whole lot of money very often. Um, I think the, the commission and the staff did a fantastic job in making a transparent plan. I read the pages, I read the documents. I really appreciate the fact that the staff and/or the commission looked through it and said, hey, the school got $100,000 already for this, use that money. So, they actually did the analysis, they knocked the funding down. It looks to me like there's, um, the total amount isn't gonna be used out of the reserves, so the spreadsheet splits out what's gonna be funded from somewhere else versus what's gonna be essentially a taxpayer cost. So, I think the, the plan prioritizes a lot of projects, and I just rise to really appreciate the planning commission and the work that the staff did to create a transparent document that could easily be understood and digested by those of us that are trying to keep track of, of the funds in the county. So, I rise in support of the plan as it's written. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, anyone online like to speak about the CIP plan? Anyone online like to speak about the CIP plan? All right, close the public hearing, matters before the board.
I move we approve the capital improvement plan.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against? All right.
And I do appreciate the school using some of those, uh, construction funds to, to get a lot of work done that the schools need.
Yes.
I think they've done a good job in identifying those things.
Yeah, we all, we all appreciate that.
Would that be necessary?
All right. I have no more public hearings for tonight. I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting now.
Yes, sir. I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section 2.2, 3711a3, for the discussion or consideration of the potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of potential disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. And section 2.2, 3711a8, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, building official, zoning official, and assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA section 2.2, 3712f.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. We are now into a closed meeting.
All right. Need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting where heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
So moved.
So moved, all right. Got a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Haney's aye. All right, we are back in the open meeting. We need a motion to, for the Luttrell to advertise.
So moved.
All right, motion, you got your motion, Luttrell to advertise? Jimmy seconded it.
Um, all right.
Yeah, transfer the, uh, motion to transfer the EBB bank building deed over to the school board.
We need a public hearing, right?
Yeah, I'd be a public hearing on that.
We'll schedule that for June.
For the next month?
For next month.
All right, that would be June 13th.
13th.
7:00 PM timeframe.
Who was the motion and second?
Hey, Jimmy.
Is that gonna alleviate them from building a big new building? Nope. One says yeah, one says no. Nope.
I don't think they'll do it anytime soon.
Not, not for the next year.
Huh?
But, all right, we got a motion on the floor, let's vote real quick. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any other business?
Uh, depends on what you all would like to do about the building appeals.
All right, I, I'm gonna, just gonna say we need to do it. We need to go ahead and enter into the agreement with them. That's my opinion. And I can put that in a motion form if you want, or one of y'all can make the motion.
Yeah, what's the motion then?
Recommend you, you, uh, consider a motion to authorize the county administrator to enter into a agreement, and the random understanding with Lancaster County to provide the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors to serve the local board of building code appeals.
All right, Mr. Gregory made the motion.
I'll make a motion that county administrator move forward with, uh-
All right.
MOU flex to county buildings appeal board.
All right, I got a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, any other business? Do we need to stay open?
Carry over to-
Carry over to 15.
Carry, yeah, that's right. A motion, carry over to the 15th.
2:00.
2:00. All right, I got a motion and a second.
Second.
All right.
Who made the motion? Sorry.
I guess I did. Close enough, getting late, getting late.
You know, it's getting late now.
All right, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.